I'll call the March 7th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. We have a couple of minor changes to the agenda. Under announcements, the DPW director will do both the sewer force main and the South Beach Street sidewalk reconstruction. And under Citizens Department of requests, we are just going to switch numbers two and three, just to keep the liquor license change together. And with that, we'll accept the agenda unanimously. Announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We are going to get an update on the sewer force main assessment from DPW director. And just so the board knows, yesterday, we reviewed the cost of this project with the Finance Committee. And when we get to the warrant item later on in your agenda, we can review what their action was. But in the meantime, we also have Paul Mallett from Environmental Partners Group here to answer any questions the board might have about the overall cost. And Finance Director can address any questions about the funding source. What, in a nutshell, though, we intend to seek a no-interest loan from the state through an emergency application for this. And the loan repayments would be made through the sewer enterprise fund. And we have some wording in the warrant to address that. And right now, we want to review with you where we are with the project, the cost, and then Rob can get into the road and sidewalk reconstruction on South Beach Street.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Rob McNeil, DPW. So the update, as it stands, we've found a total of five defects over the course of the entire three-and-a-half-mile force main. They're currently in various stages of being repaired. The contractor has completed from C Street to 7C, Pit 7C around Conso Springs, and if some more work from the fire station to the treatment plant, Pit 8 through 15. Work is progressing nicely. We have about two weeks left to complete. But as you've seen downtown, if you've been down to South Beach and South Beach Extension and even Main Street and Union, things have buttoned back up and are ready for pavement restoration work. So as the pipeline repairs continue, so a few other things will have to be done, including testing of the line with water and pressurized testing before that ultimately comes back online. And ultimately, the restoration of the South Beach Street, South Beach Street Extension and Oak Street is intended to start this coming Monday. So as Town Manager has mentioned, the funding is now coming to a fine point. We have initial response, cleanup and repair and assessment costs, along with the engineering and the construction, and finally, the pavement restoration. So the delta between putting back exactly what's there and the options that we've looked at for either a single or two sidewalk options is roughly $400,000. That is intended to be paid for through existing funds for sidewalk improvements and from island-wide roadway repair funds that DPW currently uses for work around the island, including the Easy Street and Straight Wharf projects that were started last fall. So we're confident that we have the funding, or will have the funding in place through a combination of existing funding mechanisms and the emergency authorization through the SRF funding. Couple of notes here. We are, again, starting Monday at the C Street area, working south. And the goal is to be complete and reopen South Beach Street, the intersection at Broad, South Beach Extension, and then Oak, from South Beach Extension to South Water, to have that entire quarter completed by definite weekend. That's the goal today. We're planning to have an update meeting for the public to attend next Thursday, March 15th, with a time to be announced. If there's a preference, I'm happy to hear one. Last time, we had an update to the public on the project in the early stages after the break. It was an 11 o'clock meeting. It's well-attended here with a full room. So we could go back with that same 11 o'clock time or do something in the early evening if there's any preference among the board to give guidance on that. I'm certainly open to it. And I think with that, I'd be happy to take any questions with regard to the actual sewer force main, either the failure, repair, and then ultimately, we can get to the reconstruction of South Beach and South Beach Extension.
Anybody?
Great. So as we discussed last time, the South Beach Extension, South Beach Street and Oak Street options, we have certainly one opportunity to get this back up online. And through the various parties that we've spoken to, now seems like the opportunity to... You can go ahead. Free this one. So we've gone back to the drawing table with, again, with some input from various folks to try to get sidewalk on both sides. So this option here basically holds the west gutter line along from C Street... Holds the gutter line from essentially C Street all the way to the Whaling Museum. And then, instead of the 18 feet that's there, we go over 20 feet. So 20-foot paved width and sidewalk remains the same on the west side. Sidewalk will slightly narrow along the Yacht Club property. The important change here is an actual constructed sidewalk connecting the sidewalk along Broad through the opening of the truck alley connecting over to the sidewalk at the Yacht Club, you know, the tennis courts. We'd still have a crosswalk on all four quadrants of Broad Street and same, same over at the Whaling Museum. What would happen here, slightly different, would be the intersection would be slightly raised to have more flush pedestrian access through this intersection. And also, the red shows an expansion of the brick sidewalk. So we would maintain 22 feet on Broad in this, in this stretch here. The sidewalk on both sides would be widened to 10 feet to accommodate the volume of pedestrians. And then, there's a flush brick feature that would be introduced along flush with the pavement that's there to provide, essentially, an invitation for pedestrians to make the connection between Broad and Oak and to give them a home to go when they're, when they're experiencing traffic, vehicular traffic, and that when they're walking down that quarter. Oak Street, we would maintain the loading zone on Oak and make some modifications to the steep brick sidewalk in this location by widening it out and sort of flattening this area. Those are the only improvements. The paving would end basically right as we turn the corner on Oak to the east side. And then, the vertical pavement lines are drawn here that show the limited pavements on both sides. Then going down would be just after C Street on South Beach. So just to try to limit our total reconstruction efforts.
What's the material proposed for that side, the crosswalk?
The crosswalk at Broad Street would be brick.
Okay.
Laying on its side.
I had heard some concerns about Belgium blocks, so I was curious about... So all the material will be brick, essentially?
That's right.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Good plan.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we adopt the plan as just presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Rob, do you want to stay up for the storm update from the March 2nd storm? We thought we'd just give the board a little overview about that. There were some issues that came up.
So we have various damages that have occurred to town facilities. We're getting a comprehensive list together, list together. We've sent a few forward already for potential insurance claims. I believe there was a state of emergency declared. And there's been some other sections that we're looking at. We have a section of Pulpus Road, many of you know, has been compromised at Sacagawea Pond. So we're working through trying to get that back up and running, working together with our engineers to put a plan together with conservation to address those immediate needs to try to get that road open, hopefully, by next Friday. And that, just to let folks know, that this, one of the entire lanes of pavement over there was undermined from wave action. So it's, it's been compromised. It needs to be restored. There's still, the water can come in, but it can't come out. So right now, it's been subject to continuous and constant wave action through the evening and through the day. So even though the measures that Toscana was able to bring out there were helpful in cessation of the constant and continuous erosion, we're not able to effectively repair the pavement until we open it up and recompact the subgrade and then repave it. So the nice thing is, at least, the asphalt plant is reopened. So we'll have access to that and should be able to get those turned around as quickly as we can. There's obviously a lot of tree damage around town. We've been working through the week to try to get a handle on all that. And that'll continue. We still, we expect, actually, with the rain this evening and through the night and the high winds, we're probably going to have a lot more trees down as the soil loses its capacity to hold on to the trees anymore. It's so saturated. We're expecting to have a lot more trees down. And our guys around call waiting to deal with some of that stuff tonight.
Couple minor other things. I don't know how minor. The town pier did have some damage. I don't know if the chief wants to address that. And there was some damage out at the landfill that's going to need to get addressed. So just, FYI.
So the damage at the landfill you're talking about is one of the buildings has a fabric, it's a fabric wrap building, and there's a tear there. That is Waste Options responsibility. It's, the only building that we own out there is the MRF, the Materials Recovery Facility. So they'll be working to get that squared away.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Do we want to talk about the town pier?
I'm just saying, no, do it. I don't...
I mean, is there anything beyond that?
Town pier is, the floating section is destroyed, as it was a few years ago. Right now, we're looking at the cost of replacing it. It could be anywhere from half million to a million dollars. We are, it is insured. The problem, again, is going to be the timing. And last time, we were asked to hurry up and get it done, so we did a reconstruction, which is probably the reason it came apart this time, because those things don't tend to last. It really needs to have a replacement with ocean-quality materials, which, if that's going to happen, it probably will mean there won't be a town pier this summer on the floating section. So it's going to be a decision that we have to weigh at some point in the future, as soon as we can start getting the information in. We're going to, we're having the engineers look at it to give us the estimates and some timelines. One of the problems with doing the upgrade is there needs to be some dredging done first, which we have only a small window, and that's in the winter, that that can be done. And we've already missed that window for this year by state law. So it's going to be a real, real tough decision that we're going to have to make on what we're going to do with that, that section. The standing pier is, and it's got some problems on the end with the battering boards that have broken off. Those can be repaired. But, and there's a few boards missing throughout it, down the pier, those can be repaired. So the standing pier should be operational this summer. It's the floating part that may be questionable.
Yeah. How many, how many boats are typically on the floating portion?
I want to say 30.
So you're displacing 30?
30 boats, yeah. But most of those boats have moorings.
Gotcha.
And so they would, in theory, go back to their mooring if they didn't have a dock bill. But unfortunately, there are also some of our commercial, about a half dozen of our commercial people that have five-year leases on those.
Is there a way to, you were saying the dredging has to, is outside the window to dredge? Is there a way to ask to dredge if you had to, to get one slip fixed?
Well, it's not, the problem is the head end of it. Where it needs to be dredged is up at the beginning.
Okay.
And, and you really can't build the rest of it out, because you have to pull all of the pilings, and they all have to go in different places. So it's, it's really a timing. But we're hoping the engineers can help us maybe come up with some kind of a scheme that might, might ease that.
And the other question I had was, is there a better way to build this? If this happened for a million dollars three years ago or two years ago, and we're back again, when you talk to the engineers, can you ask them, is there another way to do it?
Yeah. We've already got the answer to that. And, and part of the answer is, the wave barrier that's in front of the town, the standing pier, needs to be extended to go beyond the, the floating pier, to give it some element of protection. But again, when you're looking at, and I'm going to just guess that the winds tonight, with the wind directly out of the east, are probably going to finish off what's left there today. So we may not even have to pull it out of the water. It might do it for us before the day's over.
I think, I think it's really important, because it keeps happening...
Yep.
...to look really closely at rebuilding it and the potential for any expansion. Well, if we're, if we're going to do it, let's try and do the, maximize what we can there, because it's so important to the community.
Okay. And the only thing I want to add about the storm from the emergency management side, the question was asked of me today by the Inky, if this is the new norm for Nantucket. The fact that we had such a long duration flood, and what we had there, essentially, you know, they keep saying it's the November, or the March 2nd and 3rd storm, we essentially in Nantucket had eight consecutive high-tide floods that exceeded five foot or more. Some of them were more serious, almost seven feet at one point, but, but eight consecutive tides exceeded the five-foot flood mark, which is unprecedented. But also, what is unprecedented is the fact we had what, four days of winds coming directly out of the northeast at 30 mile an hour or above consistently. And what happened, essentially, areas like Holbert Avenue, Eastern Street, they filled with water and never emptied, because the retention ponds over there and the marsh filled with water and was so saturated that the water just couldn't go anywhere, had nowhere to go. And so that's why it took so long to get the water out. We had people saying the sewers were plugged or the storm drains were plugged and this, that wasn't the case. And we had to do something on this storm that really is not something we normally do, but I have to reach out and, and thank Chuck Larson and Richard Moore from the DPW, because they had all that going on with trees down, they had Sacagawea Pond, breaching Pulpus Road and everything else. And right in the middle of it, the National Weather Service called us and said, you guys better prepare, because you are going to get a flood that's going to equal or exceed the no-name storm of '91. And so we immediately started checking, okay, what happened in '91? And, you know, we called Town Manager. And we itemized all the buildings we thought would be at risk. And we then got down to the point where we realized the Whaling Museum was really at risk. They had done their own sandbagging for what was expected, but Richard and Chuck went down there with a couple of truckloads of sandbags and cement and finished the job. And the Whaling Museum got absolutely no damage. And luckily, we were a foot short of the no-name storm, but it still came up higher than what they were prepared for. So, you know, they really did a good job on that.
Okay, this brings us to the public comment portion of our agenda.
I'm Carl K. Borch, and I live at 14 Burn Swamp Lane. Good evening, everybody. Before I read my comment, I just want to extend a thank you to the town of Nantucket and all the staff and departments that have responded to the sewer crisis. As a taxpayer, it means a lot to me and my wife. It's been done professionally. It's been done quickly. Thank you to Robert Behauer, DPW, everybody involved. It's been very interesting to watch, and it has been a crisis, and I appreciate the response from everybody involved. I applaud the Stop the Straw campaign. That being said, I feel the prospect of a third electric cable to the mainland is a more important issue right now. One of the Select Board's responsibilities is to watch out for the local ratepayers. The next cable will cost $150 million, and I believe we will need a fourth cable at a cost of $200 million in our lifetimes. I strongly believe that we need to revisit the issue of developing renewable energy here in the form of wind and solar power. Since our last debate about wind turbines at the landfill, the state-of-the-art has vastly improved. Modern wind turbines are direct-drive, pitch-regulated, and whisper-quiet. The high school turbine has operated very well for eight years. The price of solar and wind continues to fall. While I support current efforts such as melting ice for air conditioning and battery packs at the airport, these measures will not stop the need for the next cable. It will have to be built within five years, not 15 years from now. I would like to see some initiative and leadership from the members of the Select Board on this issue. I, as a ratepayer, would rather be on the hook for $20 million worth of wind and solar projects here, rather than $350 million worth of cable projects here. We have just experienced our second bomb cyclone of the winter. We are subjected to more powerful storms, rising sea levels, and coastal flooding, because climate change is real and here now. If we develop wind and solar power here, we reduce our carbon footprint, our CO2 emissions, and save millions of dollars in the process, instead of hooking up more cables to the mainland. There are no fuel costs, no water usage, and no emissions from renewables. Many cities and towns across the world are pledging to switch to 100% clean power as soon as possible. Wind and solar power are growing rapidly worldwide. You are the most powerful board on this island. I ask you all to please help me restart the conversation on local renewable energy production options and to come up with some workable plans. I am aware that wind turbines may be banned from the wastewater plant in the landfill now. The board could sponsor an article changing that at the Fall Town Meeting, or I could sponsor one. I have been an offshore wind energy advocate for the past 17 years, and I would be happy to talk with any of you about renewables. Just give me a call. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you for your comments. I do know that we are exploring solar on a couple of town properties. And it's actually interesting, because I did take some pictures of wind turbines that exist on Maui and brought them back to share with the other board members.
Great. Sounds great.
And I think that there, there is support for this issue.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad to hear that.
We'll...
Really glad.
Bring it up.
Yeah. It takes the village.
Madam Chairman, Carl might be interested in an agenda item that's coming up next week. It's called Island Ready. It's a program that National Grid is working on and putting together, and they're giving a presentation at the board meeting next week.
Next week?
Yep.
Great.
The 14th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. That was very good letter. Tobias Glidden from Vineyard Power. And on that note, I wanted just to give a general announcement to the board that we'll be holding a public forum on the 12th, Monday, at 5:30. It'll be at the Nantucket Athenaeum. And representatives from Vineyard Power and Vineyard Winds will be there to answer questions about the proposed wind turbine project south of Nantucket, about 15 miles south. We have visualizations of the project and would love to answer questions and get your feedback. So, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know about that. Are there any other public comments tonight? I don't believe there's any new business. We'll move on to approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. We have some minutes from February 7th. Any changes, questions?
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move of, approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
Make a motion to approve both payroll and treasury warrants.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Are there any questions?
So I move approval of the pending contracts for March 7, 2018.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have consent item with a recommendation.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So you'll send the letters. Citizen Department of request, Nantucket Community Sailing, request for approval to construct a steel building for boat storage at 7 Chad Bush Road.
Sure. So Diana Brown is here from Nantucket Community Sailing, and she can elaborate on the details of this, but we were in contact about a month ago-ish. And Nantucket Community Sailing had, had an opportunity, which was only within a very short window of time, to be able to procure materials to construct a steel building at the site that they lease from the town. And in the lease that they have with the town, the construction of this type of building was contemplated in the lease. So we had to move quickly to allow that, and it was allowed with the condition that Community Sailing would still have to come to the board and get approval for a lease amendment, which Diana is here tonight to review with you. And if you didn't approve it, then they would be responsible for removing the materials. But since it's contemplated in the lease, I think Town Administration would recommend that we proceed to amend the lease. And there are a couple of conditions that we've mentioned to Diana that we would want to work with Town Council and Community Sailing to get in there, which would include removal of the building at any point if Nantucket Community Sailing is, doesn't use it anymore or somehow, something happens. And also, some kind of a revenue sharing arrangement, because the idea behind the building is that it would be, some space would be rented out to other groups.
That's a good summary. Thank you. I'm Diana Brown. We are in year seven of our lease at Chad Bush Road for our boat maintenance and storage facility. And I have to thank the town for this land every single day, because we could not exist without it. We have 150 boats of all sizes. Most are very small, but a few are big. And having, we always wanted to have a cold storage building to put the boats in, because, one, it saves us the time and money of shrink wrap, not to mention the plastic waste. And then also, it protects our boats from the elements. And not just the snow and the wind and the rain, but also, the commercial industrial area is really dirty. There's a lot of dirt and dust kicked up from Miles Reese's location and also from the Dirt Bite Track, which is right behind us. And so our boats are constantly filthy. And so having a building to put them inside would be terrific. What we are envisioning, that this would also allow us to do our dream of getting more involved in providing and... more involved in providing an education support for the maritime trades on the island. We're currently talking with the school system, the Eagan Institute, and the NHA about starting a boat building class. And this would give us space to store the materials and store the boats while they're being worked on. Plus, it would allow us space, just even if we're going to work with the boatyards to do like Yamaha engine repair, other marine trade-related activities. We would love to get into sail repair. None of those skills are at all in the abundance that they need to be on this island. And so, we thought, while we are not in that education business, if we've got the facility, we could help make it happen. And so, we're really excited that this building could help us do this. So, we currently have a pile of steel sitting on our site and which we were able to buy from Island Lumber because they had an extra building that they needed to get rid of. We don't think we're going to need all of it right away. It's just like, you know, we're thinking, we've got a 99-year lease on this property. We're trying to think for the future too, in terms of what we need. And so, we thought in order to help us pay for the building and also to support our programs, we would like to lease out some of it. And we would intend to work with marine-related industries only. So, to work with the boatyards, certainly work with the harbor master if she needed space and other, we don't plan to go into the individual boat storage business. We don't want to compete with the boatyards and we don't want to deal with, no offense, but every individual person who thinks that they can get a better deal by coming to us instead of going to Matican Marine or Glenn's or Gray Lady. So, we would work with those boatyards if they needed auxiliary space. And just one other point that they've brought up to us is virtually every wooden boat, except for the Alarians, go off-island to be stored because there's not enough indoor covered storage for the wooden boats during the winter. So, we could keep some of those boats on island and keep that revenue with the boatyards here. So, what I'm asking is your permission to, one, and put up the, you know, keep the steel and put up the steel building, which we would do over the next year or two, and then also your support for doing sublease subject to the terms that Libby mentioned.
Does anyone have any questions?
I think it's fine, especially with what Libby said.
Make a motion to that effect?
Some of them?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Libby.
And I think the marine trade should be in the lease, that the rental stuff is to
Okay, now we're moving to the Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund, request for approval to seek permitting for expansion of erosion-controlled project on town property.
Madam Chairman, I'm not sure who you want to hear from first, but the Natural Resources Coordinator has provided us a permitting history of the current project. And I thought if the board would want to hear that, maybe that is something to start with. And I know that their Conservation Commission has an independent review of the current project that it is going to be reviewing at an upcoming meeting. And I think that's one of the things the board wanted to have done before too long. So, maybe Jeff can take us through the permitting and tell us when that review might be happening.
Carl's a lot taller than that. Good evening, Jeff Carlson, Natural Resources Coordinator again. I will walk step-by-step through it, but needless to say, the permitting history on this current structure dates back to middle of 2013. That's kind of started along this process through a couple of different notices of intents and emergency certifications and appeals and things that are there. And instead of walking through it completely, I'm happy to take questions for where we are. But really, is kind of most germane to this discussion, since everyone probably reviewed this, is kind of where we are currently and what the kind of current status is that we're looking at. Currently, we just have received the second annual report for the final permitted structure, which is the four geotubes in front of four of the lots and three geotubes in front of the remaining lots. And part of that required an annual report to be given to the commission and peer-reviewed as part of that over that time period. We've received the second one after some scheduling issues with the first one and some, a little bit of back and forth and trying to get things in. We've shifted to how we schedule that a little bit this year to getting that report, getting the, kind of the peer review done, putting that out for public consumption. We've received comments from a number of different agencies, some places like the Land Council, Coastal Conservancy, and other places to get all those comments in, give everyone a chance to review everything that's come in and responses to those, and then to sit down and go through that annual report. So, that's where we are in scheduling, to try to avoid back and forths in scheduling and multiple hearings, just to go over the annual report, to try to do it all at once. To that end, there's also an open application for the expansion of the geotubes, which is why I think we're primarily here tonight to discuss the town signing that as a property owner and the use of town and land for that project. So, I'll leave the presentation of that project to the applicant in this case. But I guess to spare everyone going through date-by-date here, does anyone have any questions on the timeline that we provided?
Did you schedule a date for your?
We haven't yet. We've had some commissioners that are still missing to schedule that for sure so we can get all seven of them there.
Okay.
And with weather and travel and people being gone and a couple of family emergencies, we are still working to get that. We're hoping to do it by the end of this month.
Okay.
To get that in and scheduled for everyone to review.
That's kind of my concern in this process. So, you know, I was sort of the swing vote on this four years ago, three years ago. And my understanding was that we were doing a three-year project and that was going to give you guys, the CONCOM, et cetera, a chance to see what the impacts were. And to, you know, and we knew that it was a January date. And we're at the January date and it's like, well, we can't really do it in January. We've got to go, and so, we've got to go later. It just seems to me that the process is, I just feel like the process is a little flawed when we all knew this was coming. It's written in stone. And here we are, three years later and, you know, and like six weeks ago, we said, hey, what I had hoped was that we could get a layman's report from the CONCOM that would lay out what the, is existing structure working? Are there any issues with it? What are the positives? What are the negatives? I thought, when you understand something really well, you can, you know, you can put it in simple terms and it's easy to understand. I don't want to be in a situation where we end up in a back and forth like we did last time with our board, you know, sort of against the, you know, differing from the CONCOM or the CONCOM differing from us. And I was hoping that by knowing that we had a three years, that we would, you know, have some of that material in front of us. And I feel like we don't. And so, I'm disappointed because I think this could make this process more onerous and contentious than it needs to be or that it should be. Because I think some of the, I know that it isn't popular, what's there right now with some people, but some of the, you know, some of the things we're going to have to do with sea level rise and things that are happening are not going to be popular. And so, you know, what is it we have to do? And we have to be able to study these things, you know? And no offense to you guys, Josh, but, you know, we can't take the proponents of anything. You know, we as a town have to do our own homework and we have to do that homework in a timely and professional manner. And right now, I'm sort of, I'm not sure that we have. I think we will get there, but I think, I don't think we should take another six months or another year.
No, I completely agree with what you're saying, Matt. I mean, I think, I think everyone was hoping to always keep these processes neat and tidy as possible. One of the thing that was important and important in the last discussion is to be sure that we are getting the correct information, getting it reviewed and put together. The report, the second report, the annual report we received, received right around January the 12th. And then to get the reviewer to get through it and get that material put together and do, unfortunately, just takes longer than I think all of us would like it to take and to get that scheduled. And this being the second report and the follow-up from the first one, I know the timeline of three years, this would be the second report we're getting instead of four, three years because the first year was kind of the construction phase of the project. So, I mean, that's definitely going forward and trying to get all of that input and keeping it as public and open as possible. I mean, again, I agree that it's a little frustrating that it doesn't happen faster or things that are there, but trying to get everyone involved and everyone engaged is always tricky for projects that are this interested. And there are also, you know, obviously, a lot of outside factors and discussions that go into projects of this nature that aren't necessarily within the scope and framework that the commission has jurisdiction to permit and condition with. And I think those are also issues that have kind of been raised and brought up for a project of this nature as well.
So, Jeff, just, I agree with Matt and I find myself having to understand whether this project worked, at least in my mind, to make a good decision about whether to grant an extended license. So, give me your expert analysis or opinion about both, did this, about the efficacy and of the impact on the erosion and the beach and the...
Sure, I can try my best to summarize from the reporting. I think the one thing with any project of this nature, whether it's the geotube structure or any coastal erosion structure or anything that's trying to control sediment transport along the beach, I think a little bit of the success and failure of any of those projects is always a little bit related to the point of view of the person that's reviewing it as well.
That's what I'm asking you. You're the person we rely on in the town.
Exactly. And I guess what I'm saying is, the data that's been provided to this point is showing that the structure has held the position of the bank relatively stable in the time period that it's been installed. You've seen sediment transport that's gone on. I think there's been a lot of sediment transport that's been related to storm events. This would be the first time, this current series of storms, where we've really seen the big concerns that were raised in the permitting process of successive storms where you're taking away the available sediment to go into the system and be transported up and down the coast and nourish other beaches the first time that you've had storms where there's really not the ability to maintain the structure in between. So, in my personal opinion, I think the jury is still out a little bit on whether it's performing exactly as everyone would hope and how that sediment is working, just by no fault of the applicant, by no fault of anything, that conditions haven't been favorable where we've seen the really catastrophic loss that led us to the original emergency permitting in 2013. We haven't seen those back-to-back storms of great magnitude during that interim time period where it's been constructed and we're moving forward. I mean, I would say that the reporting that the Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund folks have brought forward are demonstrating that their desired goal of maintaining that bank has been met. I think there's a lot of room for opinion on whether or not you're seeing some of those impacts or those concerns that are there or some of the concerns outside of the commission are taking place. And I think that's kind of the crux of it here is you're looking at something that, there's a lot of moving parts and depending on which part you're looking at, you can have a differing opinion. And I think if you put it in front of the CONCOM or you put it in front of any other board, you're not going to get a consensus opinion on whether it's working or whether it's not. And that's what makes projects of this nature extremely difficult to kind of process and move through. I know that's a really kind of skirty answer to that question, but that unfortunately...
I'll let my other fellow members ask questions of Jeff.
I do, and I think you're touching on it a bit. One of my biggest concerns as a counterpoint to both Matt and Jim's is the timeframe for actually understanding success for marine ecosystems. Because to me, three years is nothing. That's, you can't really, things happen on such a long, in a long timeframe to say whether or not it's working in three years or, not even if it's working, but what the impacts are for the ecosystems there. Three years is nothing. And I think in particular, when in the report, it mentions that there's still some effects of the actual construction period that can't, that are skewing the results a bit. So, I think if you still have construction impacts being factored into the results, it's too short a timeframe. And I think even that the monitoring results do mention that with lines like, "at this time with the available data provided." So, I think for me, three years is nothing and the time scale, I couldn't, I don't see how we can understand, not so much whether it's working, but what the impacts are environmentally in a three-year timeframe. So, I think that's a major concern for me. And I don't know how you feel about that timeframe.
I think Jeff really agrees with that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to echo that and to say, I think more clearly that it's not just that there's no consensus, but that we can't expect to know in three years.
I completely agree with Rita. I mean, you're looking at monitoring environmental health over a very short time period, which can be difficult just for the fact that the environment and weather conditions and patterns and things are very dynamic and they're not consistent. It's hard to, you know, it's not like a regular science fair project where you can control everything but one variable that's there. This is something where there's a lot of moving parts that you don't have control over really any of them. And you're kind of at the mercy of the system that's there. And it's to, again, to no fault of the folks that operate and maintain the structure or the people that are opposed to it, that you don't get conditions that let you test it or see what it's going to do. You just kind of monitor what's happened. And typically, what happens on this structure is during storm events, there's a significant amount of sand that's lost, a portion of the structure exposes, maintenance goes out, covers it back up. In this case, we're going to have successive storms where a significant portion of the structure is already exposed and we'll be seeing what kind of impacts take place in the situation that we haven't seen to this point. I know just from viewing of myself and seeing photos, there's been significant impacts to the structure itself at this point where there's a significant portion that's exposed and some work and maintenance that will need to be done that's covered under the permit. But what that ultimately ends up being in this case, where we're going to see a storm, the storm this weekend, and then the coming storm will be the first time where we've seen that situation take place. So, it's always kind of a constant evaluation.
And will those, because I've driven out and I've seen that there has been some pretty severe, you know, results along there, not necessarily on that project, but up and down, there's some, you know, some stuff is going on out there. Will that be factored into your, you know, if you do this in a month or, you know, three weeks or whenever, are those, are you going to have enough information to factor that in? You know, for example, let's say, some of the neighbors have lost eight or 10 feet.
Absolutely. I mean, I think anytime you can improve and update the information is something that we expect to come in with projects of this nature. We're getting a lot of information now as far north as places like the San Kennedy Beach Club that are reporting what their losses were. And to kind of put all that together and kind of compare to what's going on, I think is something that's going to be important as part of that discussion again because we're seeing a situation that we haven't necessarily seen during the lifetime of the structure that's on the ground. And again, all of these storms behave a little bit differently and all of these structures behave a little bit differently depending on the weather conditions. So, it'll be interesting to compare this to similar events in the previous year or the previous year before that and then see how it compares. I mean, again, the event that kind of kicked all of this off in the 2013, 2012 season, I mean, we saw losses on the Wisconsin bluff of upwards of 30 feet in some of those seconds. So, I think seeing what this is going to bring, and that was really our last real series of successive storms, to compare to what we're seeing in this set of successive storms, I think is going to be very important to know exactly how it's functioning because it's the first time where we're even getting close to those similar conditions. So, I mean, it's always, I always feel like you're looking for where the grass is greener for these things to see and really put it to its paces and put it to its test. But again, this is kind of an event that I think everyone who's been following this has been kind of waiting to see how these behave in these kind of events.
So, Jeff, just piggyback on what Rita was saying in terms of the way some of the peer review wording was couched. And again, I have no, not a lot of subject matter expertise on this, but when I see things like within available data, and then there was a discussion of the walkable beach and it said, during the majority of the last two quarters, X did or did not happen. So, when I read things like that, what's your reaction when you read something like that?
Well, again, I think with available data, I mean, you're always wanting more and better data, whether it's this or even for us for water quality. I think that's something where you're always wanting more to get a better informed decision. And it's something where there's only so much ability to collect data, there's only so much time to collect and compile data and process it and have it in forms where, I mean, really, in the case of the Conservation Commission, you're asking seven citizen volunteers to digest and understand and render an opinion on it, even with experience and time to do that and be able to review what information consultants and reviewers are giving.
What about the walkable beach?
The walkable beach is something where I think one of the, always the caveats with the walkable beach relates to during normal conditions and how you're monitoring that. I mean, you obviously can't expect the beach to be walkable during the nor'easter that just passed through or the ones that are currently going on for a lot of different reasons, whether there's water or safety issues. But looking at the amount of times that are there, regular tidal fluctuations, I mean, I think you're... that are there, regular tidal fluctuations, I mean, I think you're looking at trying to maintain that access and ability for people to go across as much as humanly possible and as available to the public as possible during all regular tidal conditions. And again, that's something to go out and collect that, to know that every day is something that is above and beyond what we expect a normal applicant to do, and go out during every tide cycle and say, "It's walkable, it's not walkable." I think what you're really looking at over time is maintaining a certain distance from the base of the structure to what the typical high tide line is, and knowing what that distance is in there, because that would be your passable area. And that's what you're trying your best to document for what's walkable beach, and understanding that that's going to get wider and narrower as you go.
Will you explain how that differs from the winter to the summer?
Sure, so...
Because I don't know if everyone knows.
Sure. So, the way beaches work a little bit, this is kind of a real general beach discussion. I know anyone that's been to the beach, we typically see winter and summer beaches, and then transitions in between. And you really don't look at a significant change in volume of the beach, but what you really are looking at is how that beach is constructed physically. So, in the winter, when we have a higher energy environment around the island, what you see is the beach, instead of being a nice flat summer beach, tends to steepen and thicken, because the way the wave energy and the wave transport and sediment comes in, it kind of makes itself into a little wall. And then when you have lower intensity waves in the summer, your beach tends to flatten out and unsteepen, and that volume changes slightly. And you get those nice wide summer beaches that everyone likes to go to, that you can go forever. Anyone that's been to warm weather for vacation where you don't see those, there are a lot of beaches that tend to be very wide, and warmer areas that don't see storms, just for the fact that that sediment loses its energy and drops out of those waves and builds out over time. So, when we see that in the winter and the summer, that beach does the same thing, whether it's in Cisco, or whether it's in Wisconsin, or whether it's in Dionis, that it will thicken and steepen, and then in the summer, it flattens back out in relation to the wave energy that's there. So, that's not unexpected, that you see narrowing during the winter because that volume changes. But what you're looking at over time is you want to be sure that that distance between the base of any structure, the base of a bank, and where your waterline is, you really want to be monitoring how that's changing overall, and to make sure you're not getting a negative trend in what that ratio or what that relationship is. So, when we're looking at things like walkable beaches, or, I mean, high water shifts or any of those, that's kind of the trend we're looking at over time, to be sure that your beach isn't getting narrower and narrower. Typically, kind of what you see, and a good example of this, if you look at some of the areas on the North Shore where you have old wooden or rock revetments that are there, is that high tide line that was built out had slowly eroded in, and then you get water lines directly adjacent to banks or structures. And that's where you get either natural erosion, or something that it hits to stop that going in and then any further. So, that's kind of a real rough summary of summary of winter beaches and how that kind of functions.
I have a question on process. When this whole, the permitting went through, what was the idea to, when we got to today, or 2018, do we think that the two years was going to be enough to say this is working or not? Because now I'm hearing, and I wasn't here through this whole process, that it's not really enough, it's, you know...
So, one of the, I, did the applicant, did we know the applicant was going to come back and ask for more? It was my understanding that that was well-known, that this was three years, and they were going to come back again. So, now we're saying, we have no idea, we need more time. Did we know that back then, or? Well, I think that the easy answer to the question is, yes, we knew there was going to be additional applications. That's never been a big mystery, and it's not a huge surprise that it's coming. Timing-wise, and I understand the frustration with the timing of it, the real kind of rub with all of this is, any order of conditions on its face is only valid for three years. And then beyond there, you can either extend an order of conditions through your CONCOM for an additional three-year maximum, or you can apply for a certificate of compliance, and then it's kind of incumbent upon the commission to carry forward conditions necessary to either monitor or protect what's going on, or to protect the interests in there. So, that's kind of the part where it was originally applied for, and through the process where we got to the kind of negotiated settlement to allow the new notice of intent for the structure that's on the ground now, is that set a deadline that no new structures would be applied for until January of 2018. So, with construction taking place in 2015, we have the first report that covered 2016 that came in, in early 2017, and then the second year, we received again, in kind of the middle of January of this year, that would have covered the second full year of construction for the project that's currently on the ground. There were some other conditions that went through, some of the emergency certifications and things that went through, but that's kind of where we currently sit. So, the easy answer is, we all knew the date was coming, there was no secret to it. Obviously, when you get it to try to get through and discuss and get reviewed and vetted, takes some time to do. And that, kind of unfortunately, where we are with reports that come in at a certain point to get them reviewed, digested, and then mulled through. I mean, the reports are very long and arduous. I mean, the actual annual report this time is probably about 100 pages plus of information. And then you have reviewers, and then other comments that come in and things to review for discussion. You know, my experience with a lot of applications of this size and nature for this area is, they unfortunately just are overloaded with information, and to get through them and digest them, and to ask, you know, people like yourselves who are on a board to get through that, just unfortunately takes time to do.
I guess if, if the reports were done today and digested, and everybody had looked at them, is two years enough to make a decision, kind of what you were saying? But, you know, but we knew this three years ago, that we were only going to have two, two and a half years of data, right?
I think part of that relates to the life of the permit as well. And I think that's, you know, just an inherent flaw with, you're dealing with a permit that's good for a certain window, but you're dealing with projects and processes that don't adhere to that window. And that's...
Because three years...
In my opinion, it's just kind of a flaw of the way that the notice of intent order of condition system works, where you have a set time, and a lot of these things, and even things like invasive species projects where you're moving fragilities, three years is not even halfway through a project of that nature, but that's when your permit is going to expire. And that...
That helps, thank you.
That's tough.
So, did the CONCOM have an expectation at the end of the three years, they'd be able to make a decision on whether this was, you know, made, was effec, you know, was erosion control, it didn't do damage, when they went through their deliberation?
I think that everyone was hopeful that after the period of time and through the reports, that a decision would be able to at least, you know, be discussed, that talked about what the impacts were, and what alterations or changes that needed to happen for a project like this. So, I think that the answer is, I think everyone was hopeful that you would get to be able to have a conclusive answer. But I think with that timeframe, and given the, you know, the volatile nature of a project like this, that's very wishful thinking to do.
So, what I hear is say, "We haven't had enough time," based on the weather. I mean, that's the conclusion I hear.
Well, I would say that you would never have enough time to look at things like this, and they would be great to look at for forever. Unfortunately, that doesn't work in the time scale of applications and projects. But I think that they've provided two years of data on, that we should be looking at, and there's a lot of data that's gone forward on this bank before then. But I tend to agree with Rita to some degrees, that I don't think you can ever fully understand all of the impacts that are going on in a timeframe of really 24 months. I mean, that's really difficult to do.
If this board didn't extend the area, would the CONCOM be likely to go back and redo the existing conditions to give them more time to demonstrate the...
Well, again, that runs into the issue of the lifetime of the permit. So, if this went forward, and the CONCOM heard the application, and a positive order of conditions was issued for the project, they would obviously have a fresh three years where they would be looking at, in this case, you'd be looking at the two extended portions. That's the part of the project that's being applied for, not the central portion. Obviously, they get kind of tied together.
But I'm saying, in the absence of the extension, they're left with the project they have currently, correct?
Correct. The project that is on the ground is...
And what happens to the end of, to that project at the end of...
So, any permit that's held through the Conservation Commission, you're allowed to do your regular maintenance and any ongoing conditions or conditions as part of that permit, and maintain that structure or activity.
So, it doesn't take another permit for them to...
No, sir.
Do what they're doing after three years.
The example that I use all the time is, it's the part of the permit that you get, that if you permit your house and lawn in a wetland buffer zone, you get to continue to mow your lawn as part of that, because it's a permitted activity that's been conditioned. You're allowed to maintain that activity in accordance with that permit, even after that permit's expired. And hopefully, there's a certificate of compliance in place that outlines that even further. And that's kind of the ongoing factor to that. So, this is a case where we're getting to the end, and that would be able to be maintained, and a new permit would be needed for the extensions.
Could we go to the applicant now, and then come back to Jeff for additional questions if needed?
Stephen Cohen, I'm an attorney, I represent SBPF. So, I heard a lot of really good questions. I think that you guys have great concerns that should be addressed, and I'm happy to try to give you that information. I understand that, you know, I'm representing the proponent, but I think I have a lot of the answers that hopefully, that what you're looking for. What I do want to point out is that SBPF has been working on this project, not this specific project, but working on this issue since 1992. And there is a ton of data about this. They've been, you know, surveying and gathering other data in this area for, you know, since I was in high school. So, the data on just this project is actually five storm seasons. You saw it behind you before, that the original permit, or the original project was put up in December of 2013, January 2014. So, we have five storm seasons of data on this project. We only have two under the current permit, but five under this, of this 900-foot geotube project. So, let me just bring you back in time, 2013...
So, I just want to interrupt, so that this is where the, this is where it's hard, because we get two opinions about, and I, I don't know how out of chair we're going to resolve this, but I guess we just listen to the applicant and ask Jeff what he thinks. And, but, go ahead, thank you for the interruption.
No, no, that's fine. I mean, in 2013, there were massive storms on Nantucket. There were three-day storms, several in a row. And what that resulted in was losses of 10, 20, 30, 40 feet of bluff in some area. Basically, the dunes in front of the bluff had been eroded to the point where the toe of the bluff was now exposed. And when the toe is exposed, it evens out, flattens out the angle of repose, and then you have sloughing. And that can lead to this massive collapse of a 60-foot bank that we had. And some of that was in protected areas that had terracing, and some of it was in areas that didn't have terracing. One of the worst was that, you know, the Weimar's House, right? It was 32 feet, I think, and that had a terracing project. Terracing is when you have core tubes, which are biodegradable tubes filled with sand, and they sew them up and they cover them, cover them over. It's essentially the same as a geotube, except the major difference is it's designed to break apart in a storm and give its sand in a storm. And a geotube is designed to hold together and act as a failsafe. So, in 2013, after those massive losses, the permit applied for at the CONCOM was for a 4,000-foot rock revetment, you know, a rock wall, similar to what you see in the vineyard and in other places, and in fact, similar to what you see in some areas of Nantucket Harbor and on Dionis and other places. It's not, it's not unheard of to see a rock revetment here. And through the process, essentially sponsored by the Board of Selectmen's input, that was refined from a rock wall revetment to a geotube structure. There was a lot of pressure, of, not pressure, but a lot of cooperative efforts to see what could we do here. And it was that process with the Conservation Commission and the board and the applicant to see, okay, well, we need something strong enough, but what can we do that's not a rock wall? And part of it was to do something that would be more aesthetically pleasing, in the sense that the geotubes are just covered in sand, and they're not a rock wall. And part of it was, can it be removed? Because once you put in a revetment, it's not going anywhere. There are, you know, 10-ton rocks piled on top of each other. And the advantage of the geotubes is you can essentially, you know, it's not quite this simple, but you can essentially slice them open and, you know, take them away with an excavator. So, there was a long permitting process, and there were some emergency permits. And I remember being in this building the Wednesday of Thanksgiving for an emergency hearing. That was, that was not a fun afternoon for anybody. But we ended up getting approval for the project that's there now. But the project that's there now is a compromise in two ways. It is both scaled down from the 4,000 linear feet of rock revetment, but it's also narrowed to the 900 feet of geotubes that we have now, because originally, the homeowners wanted to protect their homes, this private property, which I want to point out that they legally have the right to do. If you look at the Wetlands Protection Act, and even our local bylaws, people who have areas subject to erosion have a legal right to put in erosion protections. It's just, the real question is, what is, what kind of protection is allowed? And essentially, the state law says, if you have a pre-1978 house, then you are allowed an erosion control structure that is, that is stronger than if you have a post-1978 house. And on, and on Wisconsin Bluff, most of the houses are not only pre-1978, some of, most of them are, a lot of them are pre-1878. So, the project compromise was both in the design and kind of system, but also in the length. Essentially, the homeowners cut a deal with the town and said, "Okay, we will take hundreds of thousands, and actually millions of dollars, out of our pocket to protect an area in which there are no homes, because these homes have been lost to erosion." But it is the breakpoint here. It's, you know, there's within 30 to 50 feet of the bluff to the road in some of these places, and we will spend our money to protect the road and the public utilities, on the idea that we will then come back in a few years and see how this worked, and then come back for the permit to protect our homes. And that was always the deal. That's written into the permit. If you look at, that was what the, was discussed at the time. That's, you know, there's documentation of it. This is not my opinion. And I think it's been very successful. You know, if you go out there, there's stakes in that area that are at the 25-foot mark, where, you know, Dave Franzudo was out there with a tape measure, putting those in, and said, "If this stake disappears, you know, we're going to have to close the road." And fortunately, none of that happened. But the road has been protected, and the public utilities have been protected, and the homes have been protected. And I think the great success of it is that the CONCOM was smart enough to say, "Okay, we want to do this in a way that does not, you know, become too permanent. We want to collect as much data as we can possibly think of. We want to put in as much protections as we can, and we want to give ourselves a backdoor at the end." And so, if you look at this, this project collects more data than any other project of its kind, not just on Nantucket, but in the whole state. It collects kinds of data, volumes of data, you know, that are, you know, if you see the report, it's this big. The CONCOM also required a 50% increase in the amount of sand that is being used to protect this, compared to all other projects in which it currently approves erosion protection on individual lots or on areas of other lots. This project has a 50% increase in the amount of sand that's required as a additional protection. And it also has lots of conditions that were not, that are not commonly put into other people's permits, or other homeowners' permits. But one of those is that there are not, there's a whole list of failsafes that say, you know, because this project is designed essentially to last 100, 200, 300 years, and that over time, that, you know, battle with Mother Nature is going to change from what it looks like today, we want to be able to say, if some of these other things happen, that the CONCOM has the right to reopen the permit and issue conditions and requirements that deal with the situation at the time, including removal of the project, of the protection system. And there, and in fact, and there's an escrow that's already funded, money sitting with the town as a removal escrow, in case that happens. So, I think what's really important for you to take out of this is a couple of things. One is that the only thing that SBPF is applying for right now is to, is for your permission to apply to the CONCOM for a permit, okay? And that is somewhat like, it's like getting a building permit where, okay, well, you can get the permit, but then you can't actually build till you have the landowner's approval. So, that permit to build a house from the town doesn't mean anything if you don't have the approval from the landowner to build it. So, all we're doing right now is trying to go to the CONCOM to design the system and get the permit. But that permit... get the permit, but that permit cannot be implemented, cannot be used without your permission later. So, so there's a, at least a two-step process here and we are only currently asking for permission to file for the permit for, and, and, and there's, you know, 30 people that need to give that permission, there's a lot of landowners, the town isn't only one of them.
Well, the permission you're asking for is a license agreement.
No, that, that's, that's actually my point.
Okay, so what, what are you asking for from this board? What vote would you like us to take?
In, in order to do anything with the geotubes, it requires two things. One is a order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and we're currently asking you for permission to file the notice of intent, which is the application, to get that order of conditions. That permit allows, would allow for construction, but is not a permission from the, from the landowner in order to do that. That license is the second permit, we need both. And you can, at the, so the board, the board actually has two opportunities to weigh in here. The first is, and at any point during the Conservation Commission process, the board can call us in and say, we want to talk about this, we want to influence the decisions you're making, we'd like you to, you know, tweak this, tweak that, we don't want you to get to the point where you're getting a permit from the Concom that we don't like. And that's exactly what happened last time. That's how we got through the process. So that's one step where the board can participate, is as a co-applicant or as a assented applicant, as some, as a landowner who has assented the application, you have the ability to participate during that process. Secondly, if the Conservation Commission issues an order of conditions, we then need to come back to the town to get a license or a lease in order to do the installation. And that license or lease would be under any conditions that you decided to put in place. So if there are conditions that the Conservation Commission has not addressed, either because you don't think they got it right, or because it's not appropriate for the Conservation Commission to do it, because some things are outside of their area, you can do more. And that's exactly the situation that we have now. There is currently a license with the town that has conditions and there's currently a permit from the Conservation Commission that has conditions.
So using your analogy of, I'm a homeowner and I want, you want to come build a house on my, on my property?
Yes.
What you're saying is, you come to me and say, Jim, I'd like your approval to go file an application for a building permit?
Correct.
And then I'll come back to you and ask you to lease your property or license your property?
Exactly.
But if I've decided at the get-go that, you know, I'm not sure I want to do this project for all the reasons we've been talking about, then, then I don't, I personally wouldn't let you, I wouldn't give you that approval.
Well.
I'm just, I'm trying to understand, it's complicated, so I like the analogy and it was helpful for me to understand that.
Sure. When we went through this last time, the town sought and received, I think, really good advice from Town Council, that there are matters of public interest here, both legal rights of the homeowners and legal obligations of the town when you're dealing with preservation of private property and also dealing with public utilities and public ways. And I don't know that we want to get deep into that discussion now, but I would.
I guess, I won't interrupt again, but I'm concerned we don't have Town Council here tonight and I'm, and I, and I, you know, I'm not sure.
Right.
Stephen, you can allow Stephen to talk, but I, but I really, I'm at a loss to understand that without Town Council present.
There are a couple of things that I'd like to suggest. I've, I've heard from board members that we'd like to have the Concom have their meeting about their report and that we'd like to have our council present, which he couldn't be tonight. So I think that we would like to hear this again as soon as we can make those two things happen.
So I, I definitely think that the board should probably in executive session meet with Town Council and get advice on the, on the legal matters here. They're, they're complicated and you shouldn't get it from me. In, in terms of the timing here, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing because there are two things going on. There is the annual report that we file that says, this is what happened this year, this is all the data we collected, this is all the storms that happened and the sand that was delivered and those kind of things. And the, and the Concom is taking that in and look, and asking us, you know, annually has taken it in, asked us some questions about it, and then, you know, they put it on the shelf. But it's not supposed to be static, it's supposed to be designed to collect data to go into the notice of intent, to go into the hearing. So I think that what would be helpful is if you give us permission to go to the Concom for the hearing on a permit, that creates a proper forum for the review of that information. The, the, just submitting the permit, that, I don't think that the Concom actually has a process to review and opine on a permit like that. I mean, they can, they can do anything you want them to do, but I think opening the hearing in which they can say, okay, we are going to look at this project in the face of all the data we have, is the, is the best forum to do that.
Again, we need Town Council to give us a recommendation and I, I'm not sure how, if we should even continue this conversation with, with recommendations from the applicant's counsel, but.
Based on some of Town Council's comments already, I absolutely agree.
Well, I, I agree as well, I definitely think that you should be getting that information from, from Town Council and I think that it will help us move forward as well. The, the one concern that I do, that I do have is that we have a timing issue, that that three-year permit is going to expire in the fall and that we really need to get on, on, on the ball now in order to not have that run out while we're in this process, which is exactly why.
What I heard from Jeff is that once you get the permit, you can continue that to maintain that project, you don't need another permit. So, right? So are you, that's where I'm, that's what I heard from Jeff, so you're, you're golden.
Well, our current permit actually requires us to come back, it's designed as a temporary permit, it's not a, typically the, their three-year permits end up, but the current, our permit, SBPS permit requires to come back, is one issue. And then the second issue.
That's not what I heard from Jeff, so you'll have to sort that out with.
Yeah, but I think, I think, I think people are mixing up that there's two things going on here. One is an existing project that's in place.
Yeah.
That you're talking about, that three years is up. The other is applying for an extension of that.
Right.
So I think you're mixing, what's, I think we're mixing up the two. It was, people have to realize, it was a negotiated settlement, there could have been a rock revement there. The other thing was with the core bags, one of Bobby's big points was the core bags were ripping up and, and caught in people's boats and things, which is something that hasn't happened with what we have there now. So as much as, you know, I philosophically don't like hard armoring, at the same time, I, I was worried we were going to end up with, you know, 10,000-pound rocks that we'd never get rid of.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think that people, and, and what, what was happening back, you know, four years ago, five years ago, we had basically had sort of two sides on this. We had, you know, people saying you could never do anything and we had the state, which I think was, you know, in my, my opinion, and it was just my opinion, I think it was, they overturned the Concom twice, there was a very distinct chance we could have had, you know, rock revement out there. It would have had a lawsuit and everything else would have happened and we could have ended up with roads in the situations we had, you know, out in Matikit. So I, so I think there's a lot more attached to this than I think everybody understands and it's not, you know, it's not quite, it's not quite as black and white as we would like to be. There's things that we have to figure out, is, that we don't have information on.
And, and I, I agree, Matt, that's all factually correct. And the homeowners that have been waiting for three years and have been funding this, I think, both have a legal right, but also, I think, a matter of moral fairness that they should be allowed to now proceed because they, they kept their part of the deal. So, and that deal was cut with the Concom and the Board of Selectmen that fund this little piece, wait, we'll see how it goes, and then we'll come back and we'll look at protecting your homes.
And I, I just have a question for Jeff about process. If an application were submitted now for the extensions, would the Concom still do their review of the data prior to opening that, or would they do it as a part of opening that application?
I think to keep it as simple as possible and to avoid what Matt was just talking about where you have multiple things taking place, I think they would probably review the report separately and then obviously, that information in the report would be very important to going forward with any application, but I think they'd probably keep it separate to hopefully avoid confusion of.
So timing-wise, you would still review that first, so we wouldn't necessarily be holding things up?
Yeah, I mean, by, by first, it may be the difference of, of a week.
Right, no, no, I, I understand, but I think.
I think they'd be, they would be taken up separately, but obviously, all of the data collected on the structure to this point is something that would be included into the record of any public hearing for any sort of expansion because, not to use the reviewer's words, that's the, the best available data we have at this point for the way these kind of structures behave.
And you're saying that, that occurs at your next meeting at the end of this month?
Yes, we are going to have the annual report scheduled by the end of this month.
Scheduled or heard?
Well, if it's scheduled, it'll be, be heard in that timeframe, when we set that, that actual date.
And will you come back with, what kind of a statement will you come back with?
That's a good question. The Concom hasn't typically issued a statement, they, like Stephen said, we typically hear the report, we discuss it and kind of go over what's been provided. They've never issued a, you know, formal written statement or something that, that goes.
We can ask them to, I mean, it would be helpful going to my original question.
You certainly could, but, but to clarify a point too, is, is any of these permits, that the Concom just doesn't simply have the ability to just get a report and say, well, we need to change all of the conditions to this permit, there's a process. And the applicant can request that as well and say, we need to amend our order of conditions because part of the scope has changed, part of what we need to do has changed, some of this is not feasible for us to do, and there's a public hearing process that goes in with altering orders of conditions. You know, they, they can't wake up tomorrow and decide that a permit they issued today, they don't like the conditions on it and just simply say, we want to change all the conditions. Just doesn't, just doesn't work like that. There's a, a hearing and notice product so the public can be involved. So it's, there are provisions in this concept permit that are part of these discussions, things may be able to be slightly tweaked or modified, but it's nothing that's significant that would be outside of the regular hearing process. So it's not as simple as just getting together, meeting and deciding to, to change a condition that requires public notice and to be formally amended.
When you're given a, a report, like a peer-reviewed report, when you guys, you get the report, you all read it, and you do, is there a discussion of a peer-reviewed report? Is there acceptance, if you, if you, do you vote to accept it or?
So the way we, we handled the last hearing is, obviously the reports are presented, everything that's there, and then there is kind of a formal decision to accept the report that's there.
And if you accept it, does that mean you agree with it? Or does that mean, if you don't agree with parts of it, do you put on the record you don't agree with those parts, or how does that?
Well, it's definitely part of the record that people don't, I mean, it frequently happens that they don't agree with findings or reports that's there. I mean, I'd be saying, there's enough data and information in this that we don't go step-by-step and say, well, we agree with this point or we disagree with this point. It's more of a, they've met the requirements of the reporting, no formal amendment process has been initiated, so there's no changes that are going forward. Occasionally, there may be recommendations that come forward from either an applicant or the board for, for going forward, but then again, that requires a formal amendment process to, to, to go through.
I mean, this is a radical thought, but have you ever had a joint meeting of the Concom and the Board of Selectmen to talk about this and a?
That actually came up during the last process.
Yeah.
And we, we had the work group that, I know Matt was a part of, that Matt and Rick Adith at the time were a part of, and then Andrew Bennett and Ernie Stenauer from Ardborn met with Scotts Beach and that was through the settlement process, but there has not been to this point a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Concom. And I think part of that relates to the fact that the interest in the jurisdiction that the Concom is protecting is very clear and very set and the, the view and the, the scope of the Board of Selectmen is, is much broader and can leave that, you know, that 100-foot buffer zone area or that resource area or the specific interests that the commission is trying to protect to look at different impacts that the, the Concom just certainly isn't legally allowed to review or condition.
Are there impacts that come to mind that you should, think we should be considering that are outside of Concom jurisdiction?
Absolutely, I mean, I, I think in some of those I've, I've tried to enumerate, I mean, I think from just my natural resources coordinator end, one of the things that, thinking long-term for a project of this nature and looking at something that could be expanded for the full length, I mean, I think there are real questions to the amount of sand and the volume of sand that's going to be used for a project of this nature and where that sand is coming from. I mean, a lot of cases is outside of jurisdiction and when it gets there, the Concom can regulate it, but the amount of volume that you're talking about moving, whether it's, you know, via dump truck or barging or however you're going to get it there, until it gets in our jurisdiction, it's not something we have control over, dealing with what that amount is or what those impacts may be to. And it's come up in our public hearing process because there have been a lot of times where I get to say, that's not within our jurisdiction, please stay focused to the Wetlands Protection Act and our bylaw. But one of the common ones that comes up at our hearing are, what are the wear and tear to the roads to transport all of the sand? What's the wear and tear from, you know, a dump truck going from Holgate's Pit to Baxter Road and, and depending on the volume of sand you're talking about, what's that over time and what are those impacts and what, what does that do to sand availability is something that comes up and a lot of people come into our office and ask about, so it's not a question, it's something that's come up there, but those are all things that are outside of the scope and the jurisdiction of the Concom to really include in their public hearing process is, our process really gets to a point where we are permitting something to say, you're required to, in this case, supply 22 cubic yards per linear foot of structure, it's your responsibility to go get that volume of sand and get it onto the structure. The Concom doesn't regulate necessarily, I mean, they can regulate things like sediment size and grain size for, that it's comparable, that it's comparable sediments, but where they get it from and how it gets there isn't something that, there's really a lot of control or ability for the Concom to regulate.
So the sand isn't a natural resource that you have jurisdiction over?
Well, it's, it's a natural resource, but our office is a little interesting that our, our regulatory agency of the Concom only has regulatory authority over the Wetlands Protection Act. Our Natural Resources Department office doesn't have any real regulatory authority beyond what's designated by the Board of Selectmen to regulate. You know, just as an example, one of the things that we have responsibility regulatory to monitor and force are shellfish regulations and fertilizer regulations, but there's nothing in our regulatory scope that includes where sand is being sourced from per se.
I know. Sorry, can I ask Jeff a question about sand? I just quickly, how satisfied are you with that the sand, the sacrificial sand is comparable to what would normally, naturally be coming out of the dune?
Sure, so, I mean, this is a question that, that comes up a lot and there's a bit of differing opinions, I know it's probably surprising that there are differing opinions on this, but the way we typically and have historically looked at sand is we really are looking at grain size comparison. So we can look at the sand that's on the beach or that's coming from the bank and you're really looking for something that through sieve analysis is measuring to be the same, and you're looking at the same kind of sediments because you obviously don't want to, over a geotube or over some other thing where you're providing nourishment, pile up a big pile of silts or clays or something that's going to behave totally different. The one thing with any of these projects and one of the great sources of debate for any of these is when you're placing sand, that's unconsolidated material that's there, it behaves somewhat differently than consolidated material that's in the bank. So, you know, the, the stuff that's in the bank that was compressed there by, by glaciers in time has a certain adhesion that's different than sand that's been loosely placed. But again, that's something where to try to replicate what's in that bank is not really possible to do. So you're just trying to get the best replication that you can and that same grain size analysis is something that we've applied to, to town projects, to other erosion structures, to other wetland replication areas or vegetated wetlands where you're trying to replicate silt and clays and those kinds of things and looking at that balance. I know there's been Concom permits that have even gone as far as designated percentages of, you know, aggregate material like gravel to silt and vines to sand to better replicate certain banks around the island. So it, it kind of varies from project to project, but that's kind of the standard methodology that.
And this is the standard method, but one of the two things that stood out to me was that the pit sand is, is rougher, sharper, and that it has less organic content. Those two aren't issues in this scenario.
In some cases, yes, and in some cases, no. I mean, obviously, beach sand tends to be a little bit smoother just from, from wind and wave action that it's been exposed to, as opposed to stuff that's just coming out of the ground that's been sitting pretty, pretty set for quite some time. As it comes out, that can change, so again, that's where you're looking for comparable size. The commission's discussed quite a bit about looking at organic matter and really in the last, you know, 24 to 36 months, and Scotts's permit was one of the first ones, the commission has started to add in things like invertebrate testing and things that's there to make sure that some of those organic components and some of those invertebrates and arthropods and things that you would expect. of those invertebrates and arthropods and things that you would expect to see there as part of a healthy system aren't necessarily negatively being impacted by projects like this or things that are there. And that's something that's kind of new to our permits, and probably somewhere where the commission and, and state regulations are headed, including some of those components as part of nourishment material. Again, organic matter can be a little bit erratic in, in spots and spots, especially kind of over this, this amount of length. But it's something where, again, I think as we've collected data since 1993 to current, these permits have really evolved over time to, to really start checking off all the boxes as they come up. So I would anticipate that's kind of where things are headed.
My name's Josh Posner from Scotts Beach Preservation. I just wanted to make one short relative, I hopefully clarifying comment, mostly to some of the questions from selectmen who are hearing in some ways about this project in much more detail, kind of for the first time. Matt Fee was, I think, the only one on the selectmen when we were before you.
That's correct.
In 2013 and 2014. Why are we here now? Why can't we just study the 1,000-foot section that's been permitted and that's been installed? Good question. In 2012 and 2013, when the road, when Baxter Road was threatened, we came forward with a plan that was 4,000 feet long. The town actually signed on to that as a joint public-private partnership. As things moved forward, it became clear that that was going to be extremely contentious. We agreed to limit the project to the 1,000 feet where the road itself was most threatened, where maybe one more storm could force the closure of Baxter Road. This has been completely funded privately. There's no town money involved. This has cost millions of dollars. Homeowners along Baxter Road have been paying for it. Most of the cost of the 1,000 feet that's installed, that's basically protecting the road, some houses, but mostly the road, is being paid for now by people whose homes are not protected. Why? Because the agreement and the understanding, and Matt will correct me if I, if I'm not saying this fairly, I'm sure, was that we would be able to look and see how the 1,000 feet performs. And we agreed to postpone, asking for the full 4,000 feet on a number of different occasions, but most recently, two and a half years ago, when we settled everything with the town, we said we would wait until January 2018 to come in for the full 1,000, for the full 4,000 feet that's necessary to protect people's houses. That's why we're here. We don't have the money to keep paying for 1,000 feet of protection of the road without protecting people's homes. And so there will, there's not really an option of, let's just keep the 1,000 feet unless the town wants to pay for it.
And the reason is your source of funding is from the homeowners that are not currently protected?
Correct.
And that you will, they will discontinue their funding if they, if the town doesn't agree to this?
Correct.
Okay.
We've been getting people to do it for another year.
I understand, yeah.
So, so hopefully that makes some sense. We're not, at least it explains what, what's going on. This is an interesting time to be having this conversation right after what's happened in the last week. In some respects, it's good. You're able to really see, how does this thing stand up in the face of a, a serious, bigger storm than we've seen in the five years? Probably, I don't know what the emergency management people were saying, that this was in terms of its duration, which is actually the, the biggest factor. Maybe one of the biggest storms in 20 years or 25 years. So we're able to see how it performs. We're also able to see what happens when the geotubes aren't there. Go out to Baxter Road now. You'll see the juke bags completely depleted, sitting on the beach, about to get washed into the ocean, causing those potential problems that, that people have discussed. You'll also see farther south, in areas where it had just begun to undermine the toe of the bluff, big chunks of the base of the bluff removed. People are, you know, saying, we've waited for our five years. Why have we waited? They are not going to be willing to continue to be patient when it's so clear that the need is there, the, the areas that are still fully vegetated on the bluff are about to slide. Another two or three or four or five, 500 feet of bluff walk that's still intact will have to be closed. The process that's happened over the last 30 years, moving from the lighthouse down to the middle of Baxter Road, is happening again. Thank you.
I have another question. What is the, Josh, what, what obligation do you have to maintain the, the 1,000-foot? Do you have any obligation?
Absolutely. We have a very long order of conditions. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have to spend every year to monitor this.
You mentioned that, you wouldn't, I got the impression you wouldn't continue.
Oh, if we didn't continue? If we didn't continue, you know, presumably, if it was not maintained, it would need to be removed.
And you wouldn't, you would not, you would not continue to maintain it if you didn't get the entire length approved?
Our, our hope, Mr. Kelly, is that we're going to work on this together cooperatively, and we're going to expand it. I'm not really anxious to start talking about withdrawing something that has been so clearly successful.
Josh, can I just ask a couple of questions about really scope and time scale? My first question has to do with how long you see being able to source sand from on island based on the projections? And as well, has there ever been any discussion of thresholds and how much sand you can dump, or sacrificial sand you can put into the system before there's irreversible damage to any cobble system? Is there any concept of, if we put in 200,000, at this point, we're going to start to see damage to the ecosystem? When it's 10,000 cubic liters, it's okay. But is there any, is there any conversation about in 50 years or 40 years or 20 years? Is there a threshold?
So you've asked a few different questions. Let me start with the cobble. That gets videotaped now twice a year. It really, one of the things we agreed with the reviewer on was that it really should happen once a year. It doesn't need to happen twice a year. But just to see whether the amount of sand is somehow covering the cobble. And that hasn't been happening. What we're trying to do is mimic the natural process where the bluff erodes, and sand goes into the system, and some of it washes out, and some of it goes up and down the beaches. And that's basically been happening, although we, we have been, if you look at the five years of data that's in the two years of annual reports, so there's five years of data, two reports, but it covers five years of data. The, the project prior to this last week has been contributing to the literal system about three times the amount of sand from the geotubes as the areas north and south that are unprotected and that are eroding at the natural rate. Now, you know, that's, that's what, that's what the five years show.
And I think my only concern, again, goes back to timeframe. And I think that in the past, we have dumped sewage into the harbor, saying it's fine, it'll dilute, and then you reach a threshold where you can't do that anymore. Or you affect, and it's, to me, it's the same kind of principle. So I'm just wondering if, at some point, if there's a discussion about.
Well, I don't think that this is sewage. This is, this is unconsolidate, this is sand from the middle of the island instead of sand from the bluff itself. It's formed by the same ice age. One of the reasons why we've been able to find grain size compatibility with our material is the whole island was formed pretty much the same way. And so there's basically pretty much consistency across the whole island in terms of whether it's coming out of unprotected bluff today, right at Sanctity Head, or whether it's in Holgate's Pit.
Yeah. I wasn't totally convinced by the, the discussion about how comparable the two were and things, even for me, a sharp gravel versus a smooth gravel. Sharp gravel is going to stick, smooth gravel that's naturally there is going to roll. So when I think about how I would imagine the cobble ecosystem's working, that's going to behave differently. So I, I think that's where I just, I look at it, and I'm not convinced that without the organic content, with a different sharpness to the gravel, that they are comparable. So when you're adding more of a different material to the system for 10 years, 20 years, 40 years, 50 years, I just.
Interesting. That isn't, that isn't something that we, that has been raised as, as, as an issue by the, you know, scientists who've been working on it. But that's interesting.
And then in terms of the sand and the sort of longevity of, of being able to supply the sand?
So, you know, there's a limited amount of sand in the two gravel pits, sand pits that exist today. Those are different from sand pits that have existed historically in Nantucket. And presumably, the island is essentially all sand. And so if it runs out, there may be others that are opened up. We're working very hard to try and find alternative ways of meeting the sand requirement. There are ideas about dredging it from the right place and the right way offshore. There are ideas about, there are other ideas that are being explored. And, you know, we think that we can meet this sand requirement over the long haul. And we're committed to being required to do that. So if, for some reason, we don't, we're not in compliance with our project. Up until now, we have been in compliance. And I think that if you look at what we are required to provide in terms of sand compared to any project in Massachusetts, it is multiples, multiples of what anyone else is required. And so I know there's a lot of concern about the environmental impact of our project. We believe that what we're doing is extremely responsible from an environmental standpoint and pioneering, and being done in the right way.
Thank you. I believe, Cor, Matt Collier wanted, had a question, or, okay. Steve?
Sure.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, just to put a point on, on Josh's point is that, that the great thing about the way this system is designed is that this is complicated and long-term, and it will change, and things will come up, and the, the issues will be different. But both the CONCOM process and the Board of Selectmen process allow for revisiting and adjusting as we go. There's a massive amount of, not just mitigation, but monitoring. And that monitoring allows for correction. And the process allows for removal, if necessary, as one of the corrections. You know, and obviously, that's not what we ever want to see happen. But it's not like you're being asked today to give permission for something that's going to happen perpetually and unchanged and unchecked. What we really want to see happen is for you to get town council to advise you on the town's legal issues, and to move forward with the notice of intent process, which is where all of these technical issues can be flushed out. The annual reports, the science, the public participation. I urge you to open that forum and get the discussion started so that we can really flush out all of these important issues. And Rita, I think you have great ideas that we should definitely be exploring as we think about the best way to do this project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know that there's a number of, of citizens who want to speak on this issue. I think that we're going to table it for this evening. Are you comfortable with speaking at the next hearing? Or could you keep your comments relatively brief? Okay. Whoever would like to go first?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Erica, do you have, I'm Deanna Atherton, and I am here on behalf of the Coastal Conservancy. But even more importantly, I'm here as a citizen who is an owner of the beach on which this seawall is built. And I just have some very brief comments. This is very complicated, and we have some very smart people who have spent a long time trying to just winnow it down to six key points we'd like you to think about. But the first thing we'd like you to do is to just look at the map. And what you're being asked to do is give permission for this seawall to be built in part on town-owned property. And there are three parcels, the very small one at the top, 48.6, then the very long one, 48.8, and then 49.9. Now, you'll see, unlike regular parcels of land, these run parallel to the shoreline rather than perpendicular. That's because they're vestiges of the property that the proprietors laid out along the shoreline of Nantucket to ensure that the public would have access to the water. So this is just very important. It's not a little piece of town land. If you look at that, this could not go forward without your permission to own, to use town land, which I know you know. Now, of the six main points, Erica, the next one is, we believe this decision is far too important to be made quickly. There is no emergency. The permit is still in effect. It's complicated. It has consequences, and we would ask you to take your time. The second consideration we want, want to really bring to your attention is that, right now, at this point in the process, you can make a local Nantucket decision. Or, if the permitting process goes forward, as past experience has shown, control of this decision will eventually pass to the state. That 1,000 feet is there not because our CONCOM approved it, but because the state overruled our CONCOM. The third point we'd like you to think about is that, in making this decision, you're creating a policy and a precedent regarding the use of public land for private benefit. Public land for private benefit. A public beach for private benefit. The third point, I think we're on three or four, is that, as you know, is human actions along the coast have wide coastal impacts. Therefore, it's critical to create an overall coastal resiliency plan. And you know that. We're just at the beginnings of creating a coastal resiliency plan. And, and you should think about not allowing actions now that may compromise such a plan even before it's developed. And the next point is that, in the coastal resiliency plan and in this decision, we believe that you should work to prevent residents with greater economic resources from adversely impacting either our beaches or coastal residents with lesser resources. The final point is, there is a middle way. Move forward with a coastal resiliency plan. In the meantime, you could agree to filing an NOI, if that's necessary, for an additional three-year permit for the existing 900-foot seawall, which is consistent with the current permit. That was part of the agreement three years ago. And then the final two considerations is to just understand that the science is irrefutable. Seawalls degrade and eventually destroy any beach on which they are installed. This is a public beach. And then the last point, which you've already started to talk about, is attempts to mitigate the impact on the beach require a very large, ongoing supply of sand. And serious questions exist about the continuing availability of appropriate sand. And further, the requirement for mitigation sand drives up the price of sand and reduces the supply for other local uses. So we thank you, and we have hard copies.
Thank you. I'll go to you next.
I'll be, I'll be brief, too. My name's Judith Wegner. I live in Quiddon at 50 Quiddonet Road. I've actually been following this since 1992 because I owned property there beginning in 1985. I am thankful for your careful deliberation. I want to say that very strongly, and particularly to bring home two points that. I want to say that very strongly and particularly to bring home two points that Mr. Kelly, I think you've put your finger on at least in this area to reiterate what a good thought that is. I have to say, I'm a former law professor. I taught state and local government law, land use and property law for 35 years at the University of North Carolina, and I've served on planning boards. So I'm not just making this up. I spent the day going through all the rules and regulations. Be very clear about the difference between reviewing the data of what's happened heretofore and what's going to happen next in terms of any renewal or expansion of the permit. I would echo what Deanna said insofar as I understand it, that that's a public beach, there's a public easement owned by the people that you are stewards for. And that therefore, it would seem to me only appropriate if somebody's going to ask for an additional permit expansion that you have to sign on voluntarily and say, we want to be in on this permit expansion yourself. So I really think it's very critical to make that distinction. The other thing is really to look closely at the legal advice. I know you have legal counsel, and I've read through all the history going back through the timeline that was up there. It's very important to read the statute closely. It references an exception grandfathering pre-1978 structures. I imagine Mr. Cohen misspoke when he referred to all of Sconsett as if all of Sconsett's an issue here. As I understand it, putting in a revetment or some kind of structure that would have a similar effect has to be related to the particular pre-existing homes and what's the problem with them. And it has to also only apply if in fact there's no other alternative like moving the house back, changing the road line or other things like that. So again, my final thought is just to thank you for the care, and I'll be back. Appreciate it.
I'm Barbara Bund. I'm also from the Coastal Conservancy. We have noticed and been aware of something that Jeff has emphasized, which is that you folks, as much as it's on your plate, you don't have all the, I'm sorry, you have issues that are not on theirs, that are completely yours. And one of those is the sand. So we thought we'd take you through very, very, very simply, a little look at part of the sand issue. The current length of the geotubes is 947 linear feet. The Order of Conditions requires 22 cubic yards per linear foot. That means you need 20,834 cubic yards per year. Next slide, please. Okay? Then we figured out how much goes in a dump truck. We looked at those sand logs, and we had numbers between 16 and 22. So we picked 20 to try to be friendly. And we come up with over 1,000 trucks now per year need to go out there to dump their sand over the edge. And we were curious to know what the cost of that would be on the next slide. And so we looked at what had been paid on the sand logs. 30 was the lowest number paid, and that comes to $625,000. This, excuse me, ignores the rising cost of sand, which as demand goes up, we assume the cost would go up. And also what was mentioned earlier, it ignores the cost of the talent of repairing and maintaining the roads because you've got a lot of heavy trucks going back and forth. Okay? Then on the next slide, I just put all that together, and that's just a summary of those numbers. And now if you'd go, please, to the next one. What I did here was to look at the 3,800 linear feet. That comes to a need for 83,600 cubic yards per year, according to the Order of Conditions. At 20 cubic feet per truck, which is generous, that comes to over 4,000 truckloads per year going out to Sconsett. And again, at $30, which we think is quite low, that gives you a yearly cost of just over $2.5 million. And as Mr. Cohen commented, this was something intended to last, I think he said for hundreds of years. This doesn't look very good. And there are other sand issues. There's a compatibility issue that Rita has been mentioning. Please look at the sand carefully because Jeff can't do that. Thank you.
Catherine?
Catherine Stover, 5 Liberty Street. I want to bring you back to about six or seven years ago. I asked Bob Mooney, who is one of the most brilliant legal minds that we've ever had on the island and our historian extraordinaire. He gave me an opinion that said three things. The bluff walk is a permanent easement on the edge of the bluff wherever it goes. So if it falls, bluff falls in the water, it's still there, whatever land is left. Number two, the bluff belongs to the town. And number three, the beach belongs to the proprietors and the inhabitants of Nantucket. So you are our representatives, but you don't even have to make that decision. He said, the decision belongs to the people and it should be brought to town, meaning they are changing the use of a land, the public land, from passive recreation to a construction site which will be ongoing and hard-arming. So that's a change of public land. And any change of a public land is supposed to go to town meeting for approval. So it shouldn't even be your decision. You should pass it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dirk, can you? Oh, Dirk first, then you, Rick. And then.
Hi, my name is Dirk Ragavane. I'm an attorney. I represent the Quiddanet Squam Association. Some of you know that I was the administrator of the Conservation Commission for 10 years, worked with, on a lot of the early Sconsett Beach Preservation Projects. I will have a lot more to say at later hearings. I just wanted to bring up two points. The reason Quiddanet Squam Association is concerned about this, they are the neighbors to the north of this project. The reason all this sand gets placed by dump trucks onto the geotubes in front of the geotubes is not to cover the geotubes, it's not to protect the geotubes, it's not even to create a beach. If you look at the reason sacrificial sand is required under the state law and all of the science that relates to it, it's to protect the downdrift beaches. The beaches that are, when the ocean's hitting Sconsett from the north or the south, it's driving, there's called a latoral drift, but it's the current, it's driving the current along the coast. And the sand that gets torn and tossed up in the storm gets transported within the waves. If you've been to the beach in storms, you can actually see the waves turn the color of the sand, and they're full of sand. And that sand gets deposited further down. It gets caught up in the wave energy, the waves release it again, and it moves downshore. Quiddanet Squam happens to be downshore, but, you know, downshore is north of this project. Sconsett is sort of like the prow of a ship, the way that if you look at a map and look at the shape of it and the predominant wave directions, you end up having a split with water to the north, heading north all the way up to Great Point. You can see how it ends up in the spit, gets deposited up there. And then as it heads down south, south of Sconsett, it's going down around Tom Nevers, and there's deposition and erosion down there. If you stopped the sand from eroding along the Sconsett bluff without putting sand into the system, the waves, the beach would quickly disappear, and you would just have the ocean smashing up against the geotubes. And you can see that around the island where there are revetments, stone revetments, where there's wooden bulkheads. And even you can see during the storm, what happens to the geotubes here is that the sand disappears and you just have the wave energy smashing in and then going right back out, bouncing in, bouncing out. And it is much more destructive, destructive on the beach in front. But what it does is there's no more sand going in along this longshore drift. So what's hap, what happens is it increases the erosion at the end of whatever the hard armoring is. So to the nor, and you can see that, there's photographs floating around on the internet now. Even, I think the town on Facebook, I saw a whole mess of, I don't know whether they were the towns or the INMs or what. But, you know, there's been huge end scour around the end of the, where the geotubes end. Well, this sand gets deposited not just at the very end of the, of the geotube, it gets deposited all the way north on the shore. So the citizens of Quiddanet Squam who live on the water and own the property, they're concerned about having a, a loss of longshore sediment during storms, and that will start depriving their beaches of the, the natural flow of sand, and their beaches will get smaller and their property will start eroding as well. You can't create a hard-armed structure without causing adverse effects on one side or the other of it. It's true with groynes, it's true with jetties. You know, sand builds out on one side, it gets eroded from the other side. We happen to like that with the jetties, it erodes the channel right down the middle. That's good, and it's designed to do that. But the sacrificial sand, the sand requirement is high here. And Mr. Posner said it's higher than anywhere else. And that's probably true. It's higher because the bluffs are higher. And it's a, it's a science of how you, how you figure out what kind of sand nourishment needs to go into the system is to take the height of the bluff and the erosion rate and the, you know, the length of the bluff, and it's just math, and it's very easy to figure out. The requirement for the sand nourishment is in the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions under the local bylaw, but it is also in the state's superseding order of conditions that was issued. And if I would recommend that you guys want to refresh your recollection, or refresh your recollection, or learn something about this and what the permitting is, without going into the whole history of this and back and forth, look at the super, the final superseding order of conditions issued by the state, and you will see what they required and what they didn't allow. And some of what they permitted is explicitly temporary and has conditions on it, which I will argue the town has not met. And you can read that yourself. I don't want you, I'm not going to argue the details of it. I don't think they should argue them. I think you could read it. It's not written in complicated legal English. It's written by the Department of Environmental Protection. It's, you know, it's clearly understandable. And then I, that would help inform your mind for questions to ask town council next time as well as additional questions to ask regarding any kind of expansion.
Thank you. And Rick, I'll go to you if we could keep it brief, and we'll end this discussion for tonight.
Libby, is that something we can ask someone, either you or town council or Jeff, to find for us and distribute this superseding order of conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Don. I will be brief. My name is Rick Atherton, and I'm here with some colleagues. I'm here as a citizen. I'm also here because I spent nine years on your side of the table, and I've been through this whole process. And one thing I think you need to understand, the public policy issues here are yours. They're not the Concoms. They are very restricted in their perspective on what they have to approve and don't approve. But you have broad responsibilities, and you represent our citizens. And I just, I wanted to say that. And then I wanted to say one further thing. Signing the NOI and telling yourself you have a second look at this through the license later on is a false narrative. It just isn't so. Signing the NOI, you're going to put yourself in the position where you, in effect, are recommending the project come to fruition and be approved. And that's one reason I think why Mr. Pucci in his memo to the board suggests that you consider the license completely at this time before you sign the NOI. At least that's what I thought he said. And I would encourage you to do this, to do that as well. Otherwise, you're just asking for trouble and difficulty. Thank you.
Rick, could I put you on the spot for a second? Could you make any comments about the prior negotiation like Matt did earlier? Because I know you were a part of that, and the four of us are, we're not. And it just might be helpful.
What I'm just making about the NOI?
I, I mean about the, the negotiation of the terms of them being able to come back to us now.
Yeah, I think the terms of the settlement were such that they would be able to come back and apply. I thought of that primarily as related to the current project, which has, it's a temporary project, as was just referred to. And they should be able to come back and apply for another three-year extension of that project. And that, to me, is different. It was an emergency project. It was billed as a town of public-private partnership. In my own mind, I don't see the extensions as, number one, not being emergency-oriented now. Situation is very different. And also, I don't see them as a public-private partnership. The road is behind most of those houses when you go to the south. We're not protecting Baxter Road. The extension is to protect the view and position of private homes. And I think the public policy decisions related to that are very different than the situation we faced with Baxter Road, where we were threatened with another storm, might have interfered with Baxter Road. And that's also why the alternative access discussions took so long, because they involved easements, they involved property rights, and who would pay for them, and all kinds of extensive discussions. And in fact, the board, as I follow it, was required to report on the progress of that alternative access every six months to the Concom. I assumed that would have been in writing, but I haven't seen anything further happen. So I don't know if that answers your question, Don.
Thank you.
I guess there's a follow-up question for Rick. So we heard, drew the conclusion later, earlier, that there was a quid pro quo that was coming. You know, we'll try this temporary, it's an emergency, but we're coming back, and it's the expectation that we'll get the approval. I don't think you, you didn't hear that.
Oh, I did.
You heard it, but you didn't.
I did hear that.
You disagree with that.
I, I don't agree that you've committed the town to forth, that the board at the time intended to commit the town just without any further discussion to 4,000 feet. That's my opinion. I think that the board did feel that if the project worked as it is, and this is one thing I would recommend to you also, that you do agree to sign an NOI for that limited project that exists today. I think there's an expectation that that project is protecting the road in some way, and it would make sense for the town to continue to participate with that. The extensions are a very different matter.
We should get all of the details for the current board on the alternative access as The altern, I just said we should put together all of the details on the alternative access for the current board as well to review.
And I think it's important to understand that some of the, those are some of the issues that were going on. There were one big beach easements that were gotten for, I think, every, every property but one that was being sold and/or donated. So I think those all came through. And then there was alternative access, which was agreed upon. A lot of that, at the time, wasn't, that was not an easy negotiation. That's, that was not easy stuff to get through with a lot of people who were threatened at the time with losing their homes. And so this wasn't done lightly, and to get, you know, get two people, you know, get us all to agree at that point to going on, that was difficult. I think that, you know, two people can have differing opinions, even though you've agreed and signed something, there can still be a slight difference. But what I would like to see happen is that this, you know, however we can go on with this, that it be congenial, which it has been tonight. Like, I think what's happened tonight has been a, you know, I think people have been, you know, tackling this in the right spirit, and I hope at the Concom level. It, it was fairly contentious at the Concom last time, and people got really, you know, and I, and I know people feel strongly. But at the same time, we all have to live here, and, and there are some serious issues. If it's not Baxter Road, it's going to be the sewer plants, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be, do we have to put something in the harbor to stop, you know, do we want water halfway up Main Street? I mean, there is some, you know, we can't study these things forever, and there's some big issues. You know, the resiliency plan, we, you know, we need to do that. We probably need to do more, you know, do a better job when we're talking to people to do that than what we've funded and are going to have done by June. These, these issues are not going away. And so, you know, there's things to learn from this, and I hope that people, you know, are open-minded enough to look at both sides of this and try to learn it.
Yeah. I wish we'd started the resiliency plan sooner.
I wish we started this, you know, asked for.
But we, we've started it, so we're moving forward. And, and we'll bring this back as soon as possible, as soon as we can, can work everything out.
And one other comment I think is important. Part of why I Part of why I think it's that we don't want to be working cross purposes with the ConCom, and the ConCom doesn't want to be cross purposes with us. And I think that, you know, that somehow, somehow we have to understand, you know, who's responsible to, you know, to render a decision on how this is going? That, you know, that isn't us. You know, I don't feel capable of doing that. We can, you know, we can deal with the sand issues, and we can deal with, you know, some of the other public policy issues, but I think that the ConCom has to, you know, be willing to do it. And in a way, I don't think it's, in some ways, I don't think it's fair to us at this point to, you know, to say, oh, yeah, you can use it, and then have, you know, and then have it be a big fight. I think we, and I've said this all along, I think we have to understand what, if the ConCom says, hey, these three things are okay, these things need to be improved, then we know what we're talking about if we're even going to go for it. So I just think, you know, somehow, you can't, you can't sit on the sidelines. Your people, you can't, like, not make a decision on some of these things as much as, you know, like to hold our feet, you've got to, we've got to figure this out. I don't know.
Yeah. We do. There's a lot of strong feelings about this on both sides, and we need to sort it out.
But I think the ConCom is a resource, and I think to the extent they could, personally, I would find at least advising us very helpful.
That's what I hope.
Yes.
And I think the coastal resiliency plan will help with us, that we make, that we put our priorities in place and don't affect our opportunity in the future to protect other parcels, other important town infrastructure.
One last comment. I can't help myself. What Deanne was talking about was absolutely true. The first thing the proprietors did when they did the set-asides, the set-offs, they did strips around all the beaches. They did, I think it's two, two yards, it was like 60 feet, wrote paths, roads to the ponds, and then they did, you know, strips around the major ponds. That's how the island, you know, because it was sort of a shared land, and that's how the, and so we owned at that point, under common law, up to the high-water mark, and they set it up that way. So I, you know, so that's a whole nother topic, but I think it's a precedent we don't want to lose. The way the state looks at it is if that erodes and it goes away, the land goes to the homeowners, and if it comes back, the homeowner gets it. But I don't think that's what the proprietors were thinking about. And so it's a whole nother topic that we can't tackle tonight, but I think, you know, how we differ from the rest of the state and how we differ from the vineyard is that that's how the island started, was used, you know, communally. It was used with the Indians and the people that are here that way. And we've continued to do that, which is pretty amazing, through the pressures we've had. And so, you know, so we want to still be able to do that. And, you know, but I don't necessarily, I'm not sure that those, that protecting some of the important places that we have to protect preclude that. You know, so we have to sort of figure, you have to work on both of those at the same time. Anyway.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have consensus that we'll table this for this evening. Continue it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to, Matt, can you take over for one second? I'm just going to go to the restroom. Or take a two-minute break.
I'm going to go and you get back.
All right, we'll take a two-minute break. Should I do that now?
He's our historian.
Not quite. No, but it's pretty important. That's the basis.
So the radiologist said, well, I found this incident in finance, it could be this, it could be that, and everyone said it wasn't this. Or, and then the poor surgeon, he was trying to decide whether to or not.
Right.
It's just like, wait a minute, you know.
Really? Is that what radiology reports?
Yes, they do.
Thank you, Don. I was going to get up during the licensing stop.
All right, we're good. Guys, sorry. We'll go back to the request for acceptance of the surrender of the alcoholic beverage license for AK Diamonds. Someone want to make a motion?
Move to accept the surrender?
Second.
All those in favor. I am opposed, motion carries unanimously. Then I will open the public hearing to consider the application for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license for Cocktail Court LLC DBA, The Salt Box.
Good evening, and I promise I'll be really brief.
Let Amy just go first.
Did we do the surrender? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Okay. Excellent.
Sorry, these mics are, they're either too loud or too soft.
Okay. And I will be brief. I appreciate you hearing this this evening. I know we're a little off schedule on licensing, so thank you. We are reviewing an application for a new liquor license as discussed at 16 Macy's Lane, formerly AK Diamonds. The applicants are here, DBA Salt Box at the moment. They are requesting the same type of license as prior, an annual all-alcohol restaurant license for those premises, with the interior restaurant and the patio out back. I included photos of that also in the application for that patio, covered patio in the back of that restaurant. So we do not have any objections. It's the same type of license again. It's, the applicant was probably one of the most prepared applications I've received, so thank you. And any questions? Yes, no, it is. Thank you very much. So, any questions for them?
Broda?
For the record, Broda Weinman for the applicant. And as she mentioned, my clients are here this evening. Geneva and Tris Bobbin are right here, and if we have any issues or questions at the end, we're happy to answer them. So this request is for a year-round all-alcoholic beverage license. As she said, the property was formerly AK Diamonds. Both of my clients have been in the restaurant business for a number of years. She has actually worked at AK Diamonds, and now they're very excited to open this restaurant. It will be The Salt Box. It will be a year-round, serving two meals a day, lunch starting at 11:30 every day, and going through dinner through 10 o'clock at night. In the evening, in the dinner time for the summer, they may stay open a little bit longer with a little bit of a different menu that would serve later than 10 o'clock, but that, we're going to wait and see how that all goes. They have a three-year lease with the Diamonds, but their intent is to purchase this property, hopefully in the next year or so, so that, but they are covered now. If they wait longer, they have the three-year lease. I know the board, certainly the previous boards have always heard that people are going to open a family-style restaurant. So I will tell you that they are going to open a family-style restaurant. There'll be a separate children's menu, and they will cater to families, and it'll be, it'll be the kind of restaurant I think that people will be really comfortable going to, knowing that children are welcome there. In the summer, they plan to have a raw bar outside on the patio, and that'll be open from 3:00 to 6:00 every day. And right now, as per the 2017 inspection, they had a total of 95 seats that were approved by the building department and the fire department. But that will go, you know, that's up to the two inspectors that come in, and it's 48 interior, 47 patio. But again, they'll go through their inspections, and the numbers, you know, could differ a bit from that, because the fire department and the building department are the ones that really make that decision. We're not asking for any additional seating, we're not asking for any parking relief. That's all in place, and, you know, we're happy with it as it is. And I think that's basically what they're pursuing. They're excited about it. I think it'll be a great addition for the community, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. This is a public hearing. Are there anyone, is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none will close the public hearing. Anything from the board or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now I will open the public hearing for the entertainment license.
Okay, again, for the record, Broda Weinman for the applicant.
Let Amy go first. Sorry, Broda.
No, I just want to outline again, and briefly, just again, for AK Diamonds' location. It's a little bit different from the prior entertainment license was for background music, the televisions and such in the interior. They're looking for similar, you know, the background music through the house system in the bar and, I believe, patio area, and having the opportunity to do live music such as a disc jockey or acoustic performances with a small amplifier and microphone for special events and that sort of thing. The building does have a sprinkler system, so they are up to code in that situation. I spoke with the fire department, so that should be fine. You know, they'd have to set up the location where that would be in those instances. We went through the possibility of do, if they did a limited number of events, that they would have to report to us so that we knew those times. But they really are up to code and should be able to do so, and if there was a problem, we certainly can deal with it. But I don't, we don't have any objections to that. You know, the time limit would be 10:00 PM for live music. Certainly, if they're open till 1:00 AM for certain things, background music should be fine in that area. There are some apartments in the, in the area, but otherwise, we don't see it as a problem.
Broda?
Thank you. Amy's doing my job for me, I love it. Basically, background music in the restaurant, an occasional DJ perhaps, but again, that's still not a definite, a guitarist with acoustic. I went and looked at the property the other day. They have the smallest speakers I've ever seen in my life, and I can give you a photograph of them if you'd like, but it's the same speakers that the restaurant has used in the past for the patio. They also bought sound-absorbing curtains and new awnings for the patio just to help control the sound. To the best of our knowledge, I don't believe the restaurant, as AK Diamonds, had ever had noise complaints at all. I hadn't heard of any, I don't know whether Amy has or not. We're very cognizant of the neighborhood and of nothing outside after 10 o'clock, so I think it's going to be pretty low-key, and I would ask you to please approve it.
This is a public hearing. Oh, do you want to ask a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have really an issue with it, but a band or DJ can be on the patio as well? Is this just inside, or does it?
I think, you know, generally, live entertainment inside. Again, I don't see it being too much of a problem. Again, you know, the neighborhood, I think there are a couple neighbors and that sort of thing, and they are going to keep to the 10:00 PM. I don't think we have a problem. They don't seem to want to be a nightclub every night and have occasional things. I would say, in the instance that it was proposed to be on the patio, that we be notified so that we can, you know, generally, we have some entertainment licenses where, in those instances, they do notify us. I let dispatch know just if we get calls in, they understand kind of what's going on, but.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be after 10?
No, and it's pretty, it's a pretty well-protected patio. As you see from the pictures, you know, you've got, you know, the trees around it, and it's pretty protected, and I, I feel comfortable with what they're proposing.
And I don't think they're interested in having a live band out there. I think they talked about perhaps a guitar player. And, you know, I think that that would be pretty much the extent of it.
And we can limit that certainly on the patio sort of situation.
It's not a main concern, I'll just clarify.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
If that's a difference or not.
Yes.
So it's a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Hearing none will close the public hearing. Any other questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I have a discussion. So did we want to add Amy's caveat that there'd be a notification when they do live entertainment on the patio?
We can certainly do. They would just note, they just notify us so that we understand when that's happening.
Well, I guess, maybe I'd like a better clarification of live entertainment. If it's a guitar player, does that have to be notified, or if it's anything beyond that?
Yeah, generally, if you're having a disc jockey or a band of some kind that's amplified.
Correct. Okay, that's.
And that's fine, it's just a simple notification, and we're good with that.
Exactly, that's fine.
If we get calls in, that just helps us and dispatch to do that.
Right, right.
Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, with that amendment, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We look forward to your new restaurant.
Good luck.
Okay, now we are down to selectmen's reports and comments, the review of the annual town meeting warrant articles, comments. I think that Libby had a few that she wanted to go over with us.
Madam Chairman, I wanted to bring your attention to a few things. I drafted some comments for you, and I wanted to let you know of a couple of things the Finance Committee did yesterday. If you go to Article 35, I'm just bringing your attention to a comment that the FinCom had. I don't know that the board needs to make a comment, it's up to you, but this has, this is a citizen warrant article. It's the article pertaining to a $30 million override, and there are legal flaws with it, but that aside, the FinCom has a fairly lengthy comment, and they spent quite a bit of time talking about it. And I just wanted to point it out to you. You could, I don't know if you want to read it all right now. It's been in one or two of the drafts that I've sent out, but I don't.
I don't see it in the draft that we got yesterday. 35, it just says, Finance, I got Finance Committee motion moved not to adopt, and there's no comment.
Okay, then it went in there after, it was in the late, it was in the late version yesterday that you probably didn't get, and I've been thinking about it. So it's here on the screen, and they basically are not, I mean, they are taking no action, and they wanted to explain why. Anyway, I was just pointing it out.
No, it's good to see what they said.
A couple, the motions that I drafted for the board start on Article 54, and some of these are citizens, some of these are, these are the sewer district articles. And I just wanted to point out a comment that you had in the prior town meeting warrants.
Is this the, we don't promise to give it one?
This is the Matt comment. So this is in all of the, all of the sewer district articles that are being approved, are recommended for approval. So I just wanted to point that out. And Article 80.
While you're looking for that, when she's looking for that, one general comment I had, I think there's sort, there's a, because I went to a couple of FinCom meetings, I spoke to a couple of them. I think there's a little bit of a disconnect. They are sort of under the impression that we're looking at the financial impacts of all the sewer things, and that we've looked at it. They're under the impression that the zoning has been, the financial impacts have been looked at by. looked at by, by planning board. And then, so they're not really looking into them. They're taking our recommendation, they're taking the planning board recommendation. I think if we're going to improve the process, there needs to be better communication, and there has to be a look at those impacts. I think what's happening, people are thinking other people have taken care of something when really maybe they haven't. So there's checks and balances I would take issue with. The comment's fine. But I think that, you know, it's a point, we, somewhere we need to improve. Anyway. Can I say that nicely enough?
Yeah. Okay. Article 80, there's a comment that actually the Cemetery Commission drafted, which, which just is meant to explain this article, because it's a little bit, sometimes people don't really know what the article is getting at. So there's, there's this cemetery, this comment that I turned into a selectmen's comment that the Cemetery Group gave us, which explains the article. And Article 80...
What's the problem again?
I don't know. Article 88, I'm sorry, not 88, 87. The Select, the FinCom did a comment. So this is a citizen article, and it relates to some parcels, a town-owned parcels out by the airport, that the article would seek to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease. And FinCom had, had a good amount of discussion about whether or not this should be recommended. They ended up recommending it, but they made a comment that I wanted the board to be aware of. It, it's just written out there. But the idea would be that before we actually take any action to lease any of this land, that we develop a comprehensive plan as to all of those things that are listed there. The management, the, what do we want to lease it for? Let's make sure we're leasing it for the right things. Let's make sure that the market rents are appropriate, that, that sort of thing. And I participated in their discussion. I thought it was a good comment. And I was thinking that maybe I even put some kind of a little work group together, which might have FinCom number on it, maybe a selectman if anybody's interested, and some others to work on a plan like this. So those, those are the only things that I drafted, and I don't know if there are other comments that the board will want to make on other articles.
On, on this last article, I agree with the comment they've made. I'm not sure how high that rises on your list over the next six months or a year, because there's so much that's priority. But I think it's, you know, and I'd hate to take away from some other very important things.
Oh, I wanted to make another, thank you for that. And another comment that came up, which was a very interesting suggestion. One of the suggestions in connection with this article was if, maybe the rents should be marked, but also enough so that any revenue that comes in could potentially fund the real estate position that we've been talking about. And then tax payer money maybe wouldn't have to pay for it. So that would be something to look at as part of this plan.
I had a question about FinCom's comment on an article about the select boards, the change of the name. And it was "take no action."
Yeah, I don't think, they, they didn't have a comment. I don't think I was actually at the meeting when they voted not to adopt. So I'm not, I don't really remember. I don't know what their discussion was about.
I remember that there was some concern from Town Council about how it was drafted and sort of the repercussions of putting that into place where there was another way of doing it.
Because we'd have to go in and change all the bylaws. There's a bunch of language in all of our governmental structure that speaks to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, from what I recall, he suggested more of a, putting a provision in where it says that the Board of Select will now be referred to as the Select Board rather than actually making the change. Something along those lines.
So that was, yeah, that was Town Council's initial...
Suggestion.
Suggestion. And Melissa requested that it stay the same. So as opposed to being just sort of a cursory, we'll just refer to, was actually changing it. So what FinCom is essentially recommending, if they say "take no action," then the alternative isn't possible? Is that how it works?
But somebody would have to make a motion on the floor.
And we'd have to be sure that, that it would be okay to make that amendment with Council.
But I don't, but to do what, what we're referred to as referred to as, is that within the purview of the Board of Selectmen? Or does that need to go to town meeting?
I think it's in our...
Pardon?
I think it's in our purview.
Yeah, for us to do without town meeting.
We didn't have to go to town meeting to do what...
We, we can re-clarify that.
Oh, I see.
So, and Brian, do you have any recollection from what FinCom's discussion was? Was it in regard to Council's advice or another reason? Sorry, if you don't remember.
It was really so long. I don't, I know they talked extensively about, I think when, even when Town Council was there, about the way to do it. I think he had discussed with them that he had talked to the sponsors of the article and that they were inclined to move forward. But how they specifically came to the reasoning behind this, I honestly don't recall what, what the specific rationale was for, or reasoning behind it.
Have we looked into what this will really entail? I know how long it takes me to change one checking account and what a big pain it is with all my vendors and the banks and all the other stuff I have to do. I couldn't imagine what this would entail in the town. I understand. And so that's why, that's why, you know, I think we need to understand what that impact is. And if, this is a, I think, this is a, you know, it's a popular article, and it's a feel-good thing. But if it has unintended consequences that take us away from the sewers that are blowing up and some of the other things that are happening, then I think we, you know, we've got to at least tell the, the people then.
If you're asking if I've looked into what it entails, I honestly have not. I assume that it would entail a lot of changes in the charter and all of the bylaws, but to the extent I haven't looked at it.
So should we consider, as the Board of Selectmen, making a comment on this, saying that we will agree to take actions necessary to facilitate this change in a way that will work in a more, a better fashion?
Yeah, within our jurisdiction or whatever.
Do we, like, do we want to give our support to the name change, but in doing it in a different way?
I would.
Do we have to have our comments by tonight? Only because I would like we do. Because I do, I understand the unintended consequences. I've heard quite a bit of feedback from people who have felt fairly adamant that, in terms of it not just being a glossing over, it's done, that this is, this is actually a vote of substance in terms of physically changing the name. So I, I think it would be, on one hand, it would be clarification saying that we would take steps regardless if this, if in this manner it didn't get voted through. But I, I would be more supportive of the full change despite the unintended consequences. But I just had a question about why FinCom, what their, their reasoning was behind the "take no action." But I think some clarification would be interesting.
Question? Comment?
Phil Gallagher, I'd like to see you be very much more efficient about this and vote to postpone further discussion of this for three years. And keep watching all the other towns in the Commonwealth that will be making changes of names of groups, groups like yours. Then you will see in front of you maybe five or 10 or 20 different ones that you can choose from. And you can see whether you like them better or not. And you, and you can adopt one of them then. And you won't have to, have had to do all the work and potentially make a whole bunch of mistakes with, or one mistake, and choose one name that you really, that you turn out to really hate. Let somebody else fuss with it, because they will. It's going to happen all over the Commonwealth and probably all over the country. And they're going to discuss it. And you can sit back and do the important things for three years. And then you can look what everybody else has said. And hopefully, you will find something that you will say, "Oh, boy!"
So I don't know if it's reached the tipping point, but which is 15%, but I will say that the number of people that use the term "select board" when they come and speak before us or out in the community is a lot higher than it was a year ago, and a lot, much higher than it was two years ago. So I do think there's a feeling in the community that it's an important change to make.
The, the select board has been the trend within the Commonwealth. There's a number of towns who have adopted it. But my understanding, without Council here, from what he had said prior, was that most of them have done it in the manner that he is suggesting.
I'm, I'll just, I'll sort of answer sort of what Rita asked earlier, was kind of like, why would they take the thing? Some, I'm almost 60. Some of this is, in my view, is political correctness kind of run amok when kids can't call, when people say, "Don't call me he or she. Call me Z or whatever." And at some point, you know, words matter. And at some point, you know, I, I think, you're letting people, in a way, and I understand, you know, I, I care about women, and I care about that stuff. But also, I think some of it just goes cra, it gets a little crazy. And people are spending their time on those things. That's not the important thing. You know, I, I think there's a lot of things that are more important, you know. I, I think, you know, figuring, I'd rather have the towns figure out how we're going to transition at the dump or, you know, than have someone spend a month on this if it takes that. I have no idea what it takes. If it takes two days, then great, I'm all, I'm all for it. If it takes a month or two, then I think we should do what Don's saying and just do what everyone else is doing, call ourselves a select board and move on. I just, I just think that, I'm just thinking efficiency and using time effectively. While still being, you know, being respectful of what people would like to, you know, would like to see a change, that's fine. But let's not, let's just not make a meal out of it. That's all.
I, just personally, it's very awkward for me to refer to Don and to Rita as "selectman." I, it doesn't, I, it's hard for me to say that. And I'd like to have it changed.
I appreciate that. And I do think, like, I, I want it to change. I don't want it to be perceived that this isn't an important article or that we have no comment. I do think that for eons of inequality, a couple months to change a name for the intended effect, I wouldn't be too worried about it. But I do think that, I just don't want it to be perceived as something that isn't recommended, even in theory, even in the most basic element of referred to going forward. That's all.
So what's, what kind of comments should we make? We could, we could change the, we could make a recommendation to, you know, we could do whatever we want.
I wish Council was here.
How about if you say you'll bring it back at the next town meeting under the proper format, as recommended by Council?
We think we might be able to do it without town meeting.
Right. So maybe just, you'll pursue...
We'll pursue the name change within the, within, within the authority of the Board of, whatever.
Of the Select Board?
Yes. How does that sound?
The Board of Selectmen and Selectwomen.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I think that sounds good.
It would be interesting if it's, maybe it's your next MMA meeting or something, Libby, if you ran into some, another town manager that went through this, the longer process, just to see what, what it took.
Well, we have heard from a couple. And in a couple of towns, it took changing every single reference to "Board of Selectmen" in all town documents. It was a massive amount of work. That was one way to do it. There's, there's other ways of it. You could do it in the going-forward way.
Okay.
But I think for the discussion at town meeting, I think we need to be able to quantify that for people and say, "Here's what it's going to entail. It's going to be approximately this many hours and this much money, and this is going to come away from these other things." I do, because, because otherwise, it, it sounds great in theory. But in, if it becomes a really onerous thing for the staff, I don't, you know, as much as I, I support it, I don't want it to become, you know, I don't want us to not get, you know, strategic planning or some other issues done because of it. So...
I think that matters. I think it's worth the effort.
I don't know if we're going to know, like, you know, exact hours of how much it's going to take or something like that. So did you want us, I don't, I'm just trying to...
I make a motion that we make the comment that I just fashioned.
The Board of Selectmen plans to pursue the, this name change within the confines of the Board of Selectmen's authority, something like that?
Something like, we support the change.
Name change.
There you go.
Yeah.
And we'll pursue it within the authority of the Board of Selectmen. That's my motion.
Second.
Sorry, that was really quiet. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And if we hear something different, we can amend our comment on town meeting floor. Okay. Anything else? On the warrant? No? No. Okay. Committee reports?
I can give one, one quick update with NCTV-18. I've been on the board, even when I was in, working with town administration for a while as a town admin rep, now I'm the Board of Selectmen rep. And recent, one of the big things is wondering where their future home was going to be. Because they, they rent that space right now. It floods a lot. Every time it floods, they have to take all their equipment out. It's, it's a big deal. And they have, are pursuing another property. We think it's going to work. It's going to be in Mid Island. It's very high. There's no water. To purchase, not to rent. So NCTV-18 could have a home for good for a long time. It's really exciting because the last couple of years that they've kind of blown up, like you said, not, not like the sewers, like you said, Matt, but with all of the, the work they're doing with teens and high school and middle school, all the classes are, they're, they're selling out. And so it's nice to see that they could possibly have a bigger space, twice the size that they have now, and they would own it. So that's, that's really good news. That's all I got.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but while I was away, I was checking out windmills. There's a whole string of them as you're, as you first get on the road out of the airport that you see going up the hill in Maui. And that was just interesting to me. And I saw many, many restaurants with paper straws.
Great.
Definitely a trend, not a complete...
In the heat of Hawaii.
Not a complete, but a big trend there. One set of straws that I particularly liked actually had sea turtles printed on them. And I saw a really great walkway that we're going to bring a picture to next week for our discussion about bike path, the in-town bike path that actually runs along the coastline. And it was a raised walkway that was really interesting. So I've forwarded the picture to Erica to put in next week's packet.
You should go away more.
I was doing a little thinking while I was away.
And just, I actually reminded, that I forgot earlier, is that March 10th, Saturday, is when we're asking, any restaurants that sign the pledge by the 10th will get their name in the Enquirer and Mirror next week. So they've got another couple weeks to sign. But this will be an extra plug for the straws. So...
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.